Okay, I'd like to call to order the work session for the City Council for Monday, March 25th, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Here.
Councilmember McGowan.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Manten.
Here.
Councilmember Shay.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Boe.
Present.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Gertano.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. For those of you in the audience, if you have a cellphone or other electronic device, if you would please turn it to silent, if it's on, we would appreciate it. Before we begin, Councilmember Boe, ordinance 110.210.8.3 provides that councilmembers and officials shall occupy the seat assigned to them by the mayor. And I would like to ask you to please return to the seat that had your nameplate next to co-city administrator Steve Cross. So, John, before I move to the -- I have you on the thing, Tim. Before I move to the next stage, I'm going to ask you one more time, would you please respect the ordinances of the council in the city and return to the seat with your nameplate where it was?
And I understand that there are ordinance about things like this. And I just think that darn it, it's a good companies here and people. Some people like to start things that I don't usually agree to, agree to. But I understand the motion that you're going to act for. And I wish you the best. I think this was given, being a process by the matter of politics. It's unfortunate, but I still would like to retain Ward 6.
Thank you. And, Madam Clerk, pursuant to Robert's Rules, Section 61, please record in the minutes of this meeting the city ordinance at issue 110.210.8.3 and Councilmember Boe's refusal to comply with that ordinance. Please also include a copy of these remarks with the minutes which I'll provide to you. Councilmember Boe, once again, Wildwood Ordinance 110.210.8.3 provides that council members shall occupy the seat assigned to them by the mayor. This is a law adopted by this council and thus it is an ordinance of this council. Robert's Rules of Order, Section 61, provides it in this instance, and not surprisingly, because if we do not have laws that we follow in the city, then I would argue, what do we have? As chair, I must name you as the offender which constitutes the prefering of charges that will be decided upon at the next meeting of the council. Councilmember Werther?
Yeah, I'd like to know, because this council was never informed of the reasoning why a single member of City Council was moved the last time. I don't believe he was told either, if I recall, at least I haven't heard as such. So, you have an offer, since you have complete control over this, why don't you offer your reasoning?
So, before I do that, I have a question for you, and we can go back, I guess, and look at this.
Just answer the question.
Oh, I will answer your question. And I think it, I would, I'm glad you are the first person who raised your hand to speak to this, because in my opinion, the failure to follow rules in this city has been exacerbated, not just this evening, but previously and principally by you, which hopefully we have captured. When you came in and to facilitate this, you took other council members' name tags and you intentionally put them in other locations, when you have no authority whatsoever to do that.
When did I do that?
You did it before. Councilor Werther?
No, you're making a charge here, so you better be very accurate.
You did it before the --
When?
Tonight?
Did no such thing.
Well, then you moved chairs to allow it.
Wow, I moved the chair because we have a missing chair between Mr. Jordan, myself, and Mr. Stein.
So, Councilor Werther, let's --
Am I guilty of moving a chair? Hell, yes.
Okay. When you were mayor, did you give reasons when you moved council members from one place to the other?
Actually, the only time I moved council people, and not even council people, the entire council, was with the changeover of election.
That wasn't my question.
That's the only time I changed it.
But did you give reasons when you did it?
Actually, I did, from time to time.
Okay. So, my reason is simply, to answer your question, having worked with John, I have you on the list, Councilmember Stevens. My reasoning was simply and only, having worked with John for several years on P&amp;Z where a similar approach was taken, I thought it would be helpful to him, at least for a couple of meetings, to have our co-city administrator assist him with the meeting.
And Mr. Boe specifically stated he didn't want that assistance, correct?
And the ordinance --
You said you didn't want that assistance.
And our ordinance does not contemplate that as being --
So, basically, you're going against his wishes as well, and his desires.
My obligation, Councilmember Werther, as the mayor, is to make decisions, in my best judgment, that I believe facilitate the best decision-making of this body, and I made that and I stand by it.
Now, obviously, that's not the case, because you have members of council who would clearly disagree with that.
You may not be the answer, but that's the answer. Councilmember Stevens?
So, on 110-210, the following rules and procedures govern the meeting, but they may be suspended at any time with the consent of the majority of the council present at any meeting, is that correct?
That would be a question for the city attorney, and whether that contemplates this particular ordinance. I'm not aware of the answer to that.
Rule number nine is what you're stating under, so 110-210A says that the rules may be suspended at any time by a consent of the majority of the council present at the meeting. So, I guess just as an effort to, you know, protect Mr. Boe from a rules violation, I will go ahead and make the motion to suspend rule number nine for this meeting, so Mr. Boe can keep a seat next to Ms. Jordan.
And I would second that motion.
It's actually rule number three. 110-210A.
210, oh, I'm sorry. There you go. Yep, rule number three, then. So, motion to suspend rule number three for --
Let's get, I do have your second, Councilmember Jordan. Let's get determination from the city attorney as to whether that particular rule can be suspended.
Could you please clarify the rule that you're citing?
So, Section 110-210 rules of procedure. The following rules of procedure shall govern the conduct of all meetings of the City Council, although these rules, other than those prescribed by statute, may be suspended at any time by the consent of a majority of the council present at any meeting.
The language that's in there seems to indicate that it has to do with the conduct of the meeting, and this wouldn't be an issue of conduct of the meeting, but the seating arrangements, but the law, it's not, the language in it's not clear.
So, I think it's clear. Can I go ahead with my motion?
Just one second. A follow-up to the city attorney. Given the lack of clarity, what would your recommendation for the council be?
And do we have to take on your recommendation?
You do not.
Excellent.
Again, I don't believe it addresses that specific issue. I think it has more to do with the conduct of the meetings, but the council can decide otherwise.
Okay, I will continue with the motion, please.
So, we have a motion to suspend 110.210.8.3 made by Councilmember Stevens, and we have a second by Councilmember Jordan.
Just for this meeting.
Just for this meeting.
Correct.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? See no discussion, roll hall vote, please.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Manten.
No.
Councilmember Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Boe, does she vote on it?
He can vote.
Uh, he can vote on this motion.
Okay. Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes, sorry, I don't think we heard Councilmember Boe's vote. What was your vote, John?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Gertano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, next, moving into information, we have 15 items, by my count. Any items under information that any member of the council would like to raise? Councilmember Werther?
Mr. Vunich, if you don't mind coming to the podium, I'd like to talk about the item B3, concerns regarding Cox Creek erosion issues. I appreciated the discussion at Planning Parks meeting, and I recognize a lot of that discussion was very focused in a particular stretch of Cox Creek. But obviously, we're, and I think council, at least the committee, seemed to indicate they wanted to look at this in total, across all the areas that Cox Creek is currently eroding at, which I can't imagine is anywhere, anything but all of Cox Creek at this point. Throughout our history, we've had the use and expertise of a gentleman from the University of Missouri Columbia, who I believe is retired, Dr. Hammer. Did the committee take any stand with regards to engaging Dr. Hammer in some way, shape, or form to bring him back, since he, and I know he and Stephanie Lickerman, I think there are a few other names that rattle around in my brain, were integral in terms of actually walking the creek and understanding, you know, its conditions and so forth, and bringing them back in to assist with some of this work?
There's two parts, I think, to your statement.
Yeah, it was probably a multiple-part question, sorry about that.
I'll start with, no apology needed. I'll start with the first. In terms of the committee's discussion this past week, I believe when we concluded it, the committee sought to have all of the problem areas within the watershed itself identified. And so, from the department's perspective, we've identified Ward 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and 8. I believe that's inclusive of the Cox Creek watershed, and the intent is to do an inventory from its headwaters, so to speak, which is on the south side of Manchester Road, all the way through the city of Wildwood to the northernmost boundary. Secondly, Dr. Hammer was integral in many of the repairs, designs of bridges, and other improvements during his tenure here at the city of Wildwood as one of its primary environmental consultants. The committee last week did not identify a consultant, but the thought is, is to at least give Dr. Hammer a call, determine his interests, because his background is so extensive, it'd be almost impossible to recreate some of the items just from a historical standpoint without his participation.
I appreciate that, and if needed, you need any motion, go ahead and make that contact or engage him in any way, shape, or form, please speak up.
Again, I don't believe the committee was restricting the department to any individual, company, organization, or firm, so I would probably start there unless there's an objection from the City Council tonight.
So, Joe, to follow up on that, are you looking for a motion from the council in that regard, or any other regard relative to this?
The department had actually identified this as a for information, assuming that the action of the committee to at least engage a discussion with potential consultants, because once consultants identified or consultants, it would come back to the committee, and then the committee would make a recommendation, because there would be a contract, a professional services contract. So, the department wasn't necessarily seeking any action tonight, but wanted to respond to any questions or comments.
Councilor Gertano?
My item is a different one here, so if someone else wants to continue with this topic, I'll wait.
Sure, thank you, Joe. Councilmember McCutcheon, Stevens, McCutcheon on this issue?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that before City Administrator Thomas left, he and I were trying to put a team together that we felt was appropriate to deal with our erosion problems. MSD, Corps of Engineers, Missouri Department of Resources, and a couple others, we wanted to get the people in charge in the same room at the table to see what we could come up with. So, I had a discussion with Joe, we'll have that at the next meeting and try to move that forward.
And just to kind of give an analogy, when we, as the city, were asked to assist in the harbors at Lake Chesterfield lake issue, that's almost the exact formula we used. We invited all of the experts from different agencies, from the federal level on down. We received two attended, but the two that attended were very helpful in better understanding the steps we would need to take for the future. So, I see that as an integral step as well.
Councilor Stevens on this issue?
Yes, please. For Cox Creek, I can't tell on the MSD proposal for this Prop S, there's just a couple of little red dots in Wildwood. Is Cox Creek, Cox Creek one of those dots as a proposed project, do you know?
My recollection is, one is on Ridge Road, and the other is in Winding Trails. And Winding Trails, I believe, is part of the Cox Creek watershed. The area on Ridge Road may actually drain toward the Merrimack River directly. So, at least one of the two I know is in Cox Creek.
Councilor Manten?
Joe, just to follow up the comments from Councilmember Werther, I know that when MSD put that sanitary trunk in from Church Road up to Anniversary Park, one of the things they did, in my opinion, to further exacerbate the erosion problem, was the removal of a lot of trees, some of them grand trees, and other undergrowth. And they replaced it with grass and said they wouldn't put anything else in there, but maybe we can look at that issue going forward.
The committee was keen, so to speak, on that as well, because obviously, there was a balance for a bit of time in the watershed. Somewhere in the past four or five years, that balance seems to have shifted. And in the report, the department identified Ameren Missouri activity within its large right-of-way area, the transmission easement, and then MSD's work on that main trunk line for sanitary sewer purposes. So, immediately, those are two major land disturbance activities that occurred, and then shortly thereafter, and peers were starting to see some of the signs of erosion that we dealt with when the city first incorporated.
Right, and just to follow up, I know we're going to look at the system in its entirety, and we should, but those two issues in my mind, Ameren and the sewer trunk, further exacerbated the downstream issues in that creek.
I have a theory that your statement is correct. Now, hopefully, we'll find if the theory is true or not.
Thank you. Councilor Greg Noni on this issue?
Yes, sir. A couple of things. First of all, Cox Creek's not the only place we're having a problem, as you know, the other day, and I appreciate Mr. Archesky helping me out with one of my constituents who lives along Bottom Creek, we have an erosion problem developing there. And the Cox Creek has been a problem for the entire time that Wildwood has been in existence, and prior to that. And Mr. Manten brought up a good point, that Ameren and MSD have been cited as being part of the damage here. I would have thought that the Army Corps of Engineers would be upset with the fact that they did disturbance of the creek without doing adequate replacement of the damage or repair of the damage. Is there any way that we can come to, act to them and say, you guys have got to help us with repairing the damage that you created here?
Yes, we identified the Corps as a primary participant in any discussion.
Well, the answer to the question was, can we get MSD and Ameren to cooperate with repair of the damage?
My impression is that Ameren may be a more difficult participant, but the gentleman from MSD may be, who's speaking tonight, may be able to answer that question better than I.
So, we invited him. Councilmember Taylor on this issue?
Yes. Okay, yeah, so, the Cox Creek tributaries in Winding Trails, there's two or three, I think two, but I had several questions. One, no one's considering pouring concrete for stabilization, is that correct?
That was a process that MSD used many, many years ago. They've even moved away from that. They use larger riprap, but how you install that riprap is key to its success.
Understood, because there is, there is a lot of erosions and blowouts now. One thing I wanted to put out there, in some of the tributaries, there's erosion happening, not in Cox Creek, but in the tributaries, that go back four or five feet. Now, it's unlikely that there would be kids to play under that, but if that ever goes with people under that, it's a fatal incident, right? So, there's, there's actually, so since there's a lot of trees, I mean, the roots, I mean, it goes back four or five feet, and I've, I know of two or three locations like that, so I'd like to pass that along to you.
Please do.
I am, I am averse to the concrete solution, and also, I'd like to try to keep it as natural as possible, but there are some treacherous situations for kids looking for rocks.
And the, as the creek, as the creek erodes, it seeks a balance, a point of where it's at bedrock. And then what happens is, is the tributaries that feed into the main branch try to reach that same balance. And I believe Dr. Hammer called it headward erosion. So, it's headward erosion, so it starts working up the fingers, and everything's seeking balance, and your description is very accurate of what we saw early on in 1995, 1996 timeframe. And I'm sorry to hear that.
No, no.
I wish it weren't, but we'll see what we can do.
Councilor Bertolino on this issue? Councilor Gertano, you're next.
Thank you. I wanted to speak to the item regarding the recommendation for selection of the waste hauler. First, I do want to thank the committee and the city team that has made themselves available as we met over, I believe, two special meetings, to get down to the bottom of this issue here to figure out what's the future state for waste hauler for our city. And I'm speaking to it just to raise awareness with the rest of the council here, because this is an issue that affects every resident. So, the committee did vote at the last meeting, the recommendation that we would recommend Waste Connections. They were one of the three waste hauling companies that submitted a proposal, and also with that recommendation, which I think will be a very favorable response from our residents, going back to single stream. So, again, for awareness of our council here, Waste Connections, you know, with their proposal, they shared that they own their own facilities. They have a facility over in Bridgeton called Champ for landfill, and they also own their own recycling center, which is located out of state in Kansas, but they would transport those materials. However, there is also discussion about engaging the city of St. Peters to use their recycling facility, and that would be something that the city would negotiate directly with St. Peters. But some other key things that I think you'll like about this proposal, from what I, what we heard at the meeting, new trucks for the city, including small trucks, I wrote down 11 trucks. They also said that there would be a full-time onsite supervisor to address issues, so that's a plus for our city here to get us up and running and address any concerns there. There was mention of a community rebate program, so for every household in the city, they would give back to Wildwood 25 cents per household, and that would be used for recycling-type education programs and so forth. So, I think this is great news for our city, and again, thank the rest of the committee for the work that they put in to help come up with this recommendation for our city. I mean, there were proposals from three different providers, therefore, you know, I think this was the clear, obvious one. Also, from the proposals that were presented, the cost, Waste Connection came in the lowest. And so, we would look to try to keep schedules the same as they are today. There would be no change, and also, glass would be recyclable again, and would be picked up at the curb. So, I think I've covered about all the items here, but also their service number, they have service until 9:00 PM if you call customer service, which is different than today's provider. I think you only can get to them till 5:00 o'clock, and they also provide service on Saturdays from 7:00 to 10:00, customer service. So, if there are any questions, let me know, or a member of the committee, because I think this is going to be an important topic for us to move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bertolino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rick, very minor issue, but the Etherington Road changed, name changed to Taylor. Joe, and you and I have had numerous emails with residents who ask me about when we're going to open that road up. Will this sign change delay that at all?
Councilmember Bertolino, I don't see that the two are related, quite frankly. I'll defer to Joe if he wants to add anything relative to the reopening of the road, but I would see them as being separate.
Okay, good, because we talked about the things that needed to get done and signage was one of those before we could make, Joe?
Yes, the opening of the new section of roadway through the villages at Brightleaf has been delayed, and the principal cause of the delay has been public safety. The department met with Fisher Frictl, which appears to be the representative developer for the two, and they mentioned that they had some concerns about the extent of street signs that were required, particularly at the cost of each of them, and we thought we had a solution when we said we allow just a regular type of street sign and pole to be in place until construction was near completion. But the other day, when Public Works and Planning met, there was a concern that none of the sidewalks are in place. So, if the street were open and people were to walk on it, they'd have to walk in the drive lanes themselves. And quite frankly, Mr. Bertolino, I haven't quite figured out how best to approach that, because if we install the sidewalks now, typically what happens is they get damaged, significant damage during the construction process as each home is built. So, kind of struggling with a solution. I know everybody wants it open, and there's a desire on the part of city personnel to have it open, but we're concerned about public safety. And finally, the other issue that was identified most recently is, once the work starts on Route 109 by Route 100, and construction delays become more typical, there was a concern about how much cut-through traffic we might see through the subdivision at that time, which would exacerbate any public safety issues that exist prior.
Thanks, Joe. Do you know, so far, there's really only one resident that's really brought the issue to us, but I think it's, it's great that we're keeping on top of it, and we have a good explanation on why we're not open yet.
And the gentleman's very, been very patient with the department as the negotiations went back and forth between Fisher Frictl. I do owe him a final response, but as I say, I'm not sure what that response is. I mean, the simplest solution would be, okay, let's open it and see what happens, but I'd be amiss if I said I didn't have some reservations about that.
Councilor Werther?
Thank you, thank you. Back to the selection of a waste hauler. Mr. Brown, one side note, and you don't need to get up, I don't think, for this particular item. Had an opportunity to speak with Chuck Barkum as that meeting wrapped up. He indicated that the size of the trucks, especially the small trucks, that Waste Connections is seeking to acquire, may be too small compared to what he had brought in and worked with. It may be of just a point of negotiation, point to follow up on more than anything else, but I didn't, I didn't know if you and Mr. Barkum had an opportunity to talk at all. And I figured while we had the opportunity, I wanted to bring that to your attention so in case that's, could be addressed. Thanks.
Councilor Doddwell?
Nothing at this time.
Councilor Manton?
Yes, just to add, Rick, a little more to what Councilmember Garitano said about the waste hauler. Important to me was their reputation for performance. They have a stellar reputation with not only the county, but other municipalities, and that, that's important. I mean, when it was mentioned, they hadn't had a complaint in the last six months. Yeah, that's something to take note of. Also, they're a publicly owned company, which, which to me speaks to a long-term relationship. They're less susceptible to being merged or taken over by another company. And of course, they have the facilities, as Councilmember Garitano said. And lastly, it should be noted that the vote of the Admin and Public Works Committee was unanimous.
Councilor McGowan?
I have just a couple of items, I assume, with regard to the Better Together item that has that information, is developed, accumulated, and so forth, that all of that information will be passed along to the Preservation Commission. So they have that for, as they consider whatever they're, they're working on.
Mr. Cross?
Mr. McGowan, we're in fact, today preparing the agenda and all the subsequent materials for that meeting on Thursday of this week at 6:30 in the, in the community room. So included in that package will be all three updates of the Better Together that was part of, Mr. Vunich is my weekly report, but there will also be the, the two resolutions that have been passed. There is the executive summary that our marketing firm prepared, as well as the, the list of, of objectives and goals that were developed by the Administration and Public Works Committee to, to get, to charge and give direction to the commission. So all that will be part of the package then that will be posted prior to Thursday's meeting.
Thank you. I do have one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
I could. Joe, there was a note in the, in your memo regarding rural internet about a delay, if I, if I read it correctly, regarding the pole on Orville, near the Meridian subdivision. What, what is causing that delay? I thought we had that thing on, kind of headed on track to get something done there.
Yes, the company that can install the required light by the Federal Aviation Administration and paint the portion of the pole above the tree line, we never got coordinated prior to the fall, and then when winter set in, they were hesitant to go up there and paint because they didn't know if it would be a lasting, that paint would last as long as it should. So Kathy and I have had a discussion, Kathy Arnett, our Assistant Director of Planning and Parks, and we're going to make that a priority. The obstruction, so to speak, has been mapped by the Federal Aviation Administration for Spiritus St. Louis Airport. So there's a knowledge of it, we just need to do the final two-step.
Councilor Shea?
Just a quick note on the recycling. One of the criteria that was a priority for me in interviewing the three providers that presented was the verifiable, the verifiable effort to, that single stream is going to go into recyclable stream. And after, after the meeting, I felt a pretty high level of confidence that switching to single stream with this provider is guaranteeing as much of the uncontaminated recyclable stream is going to make it into the recyclable markets. And so I think that, because we made a, we made a lot of, we put a lot of emphasis on the need for dual stream because of that one factor. And now, now we're going to a single stream, which is a major convenience for residents at a very affordable cost with a high level of confidence that we're going to get those products into the recyclable market. So rest assured. Mr. Vunich, I do have a question regarding your memoranda on the Phase 3 of the park. And I'm intrigued by the notation about a potential location of archaeological significance. Could, could you elaborate, please?
Yes. When the project engineer sought the nationwide permit for the crossing on Bottom Creek, the United States Army Corps of Engineers identified an issue that actually had been catalogued as part of Phase 1, did not come into play during Phase 2, and then was re-identified in Phase 3. To make a long story short, in Phase 1, a multiple-use trail was constructed outside the parameters of the original contract. The trail was constructed due to the fact that a grant was awarded by the state of Missouri. That grant required the archaeological investigation. It identified two locations, but in the Great Meadow area, not part of the trail project. The Phase 2 did not use any state or federal funds, so it never came into play with the, and we did no creek crossing. Phase 3 required the creek crossing, so it came back into play. To make a long story short, an archaeologist, Joe Harrell, did an investigation a week ago this past Friday, determined that the disturbance of the archaeological site was minimal, if any, and that they actually found some additional items, but it appears they're outside the parameters of the limits of disturbance for Phase 3. I expect to have a report from them this week, which will be shared with all of city councils.
Okay, because usually when we run into things like this, it's, it's either artifacts and sometimes it's an unknown cemetery. And we, we're, you know, we have a lot of those. And do you, do you have any idea what that site might represent?
There is the foundation remnants of the original homestead. They also found some additional foundation pieces with this most recent investigation. And then there were seven archaeological assets that were superficial, not underground, and they discovered those. Again, the key component is, we'll do our very best to preserve those and recognize the locations. Good news from the Department of Planning and Parks perspective, it appears Phase 3 can proceed forward.
Okay, great. Thank you for that update.
Councilor McCutcheon?
First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Bartoni for the suggestion of the name change at Taylor Road and Etherington Road. Thought that was a very good suggestion. So when we do put up a sign, a street sign at what used to be Etherington, but is now going to be Taylor, can it be a large sign? Because you really can hardly see the sign when you go past it now. So can we make it larger? Is it going to be like town center signs or what?
Well, Councilmember McCutcheon, when we replace signs, we upgrade them to the current standard, which actually does provide for larger letter height. So it will be slightly enlarged, which does provide a greater readability for those who need it.
And do you have any update on the gum ball trees?
Well, there's a memo in the packet for the meeting regarding the gum ball treatment option. And I do have a representative with Davie here tonight, if you want to ask any specific questions.
Okay.
I think that the gist of the treatment is that it is rather pricey. The price that we recorded was about $300 per tree, which to me seems on the expensive side. And the other concern that we have with it is the timing. To have the application be successful, it has to be done in a short window in the spring this time of year when they're budding out, if I understand correctly. So it would have to be timed for the specific time of year, otherwise it's not effective.
Are there any types of grants that might be available?
I'm not aware of any grants relative to the sweet gum tree at this point in time. I don't know if our representative from Davie has anything to add on that.
Councilor Greg Notting?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Joe, I hate to bring you back up, but I have a question about this rural internet. I have read with some interest the experimentation that's being done by Bay's ET with the fiber optic being run. Is this fiber optic cable that's being run from a wireless node? Is that what's happening?
Actually, no. We thought that was going to be the scenario that Bay's ET would use. They're actually running a true fiber system from their back hall location in Pacific, Missouri, all the way along Route 100 and now into Hawks Rest. The wireless components that have been serving Hawks Rest now become backup.
Wow, that's, that's impressive. One of the questions I had with that is, though, is there a possibility that fiber can be run from the transmitting or receiving transmitting station to, to the houses? In other words, could we potentially get some kind of grant or some kind of process where we can actually use our nodes to distribute this over fiber?
The pilot that involves Hawks Rest subdivision, I don't know the applicability. I've encouraged our consultant that's working on this matter to study it closely and see if it's a template that'll work elsewhere. And if not, how can we get fiber from our poles to the homes? And if that's a system that works, that's what we're looking at as well. I don't know right now.
Well, this may be one solution because it's very obvious we're not going to get grant money to run fiber optic cable throughout the city, right?
No, the consultant has already completed that part of their task, and it appears that, again, Wildwood's rural, but not rural enough.
Yeah, we're not rural enough. That's wonderful. Okay, and the other, the other question was referenced, I don't know, I don't know, maybe City Attorney can't answer this. With the new commission being formed for the merger, the preservation, I noted, and I was aware of it before you sent out your memorandum regarding Mr. Hatfield in Jefferson City requesting records from 88 cities and municipalities in St. Louis County, are we going to be in compliance if we're, if we're doing this commission?
I have no concern about the, the formation of the commission being in compliance, and will certainly continue to operate and advise them to maintain compliance.
Thank you.
Councilor Doddwell?
Just a couple of quick questions probably for you, Joe, but also one for Rick, so I'll, I'll make him get up here before we're finished tonight.
Fair enough.
On the Essent Log Cabin, I looked through that document, and if I missed it, I apologize, but I was trying to determine where are we going to be placing the Essent Log Cabin for its reconstruction?
The Historic Preservation Commission has dodged that elephant in the room for quite a while. And we're at a stage now where I think we have to make that determination. We have narrowed it down to three locations. Community Park, behind City Hall on the remainder of the property that Wildwood owns, and then Glencoe City Park. And so part of the charge of the architectural firm is to evaluate those sites and see which, from their perspective, might be the best for the relocation.
Perhaps if they come down to two locations, maybe we could ask our citizenry to vote on a location as to where they would, might like it.
The Historic Preservation Commission will only make a recommendation. That recommendation will come to city council, and from there, however you want to make the selection, we'll put it into practice once you tell us.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Joe.
Sure.
Rick, question for you. On the recyclables, during our discussion with our vendors, one of the concerns we had was making sure that what went into the recycle bins was clean and able to be recycled. So I don't know if this is so much a question, but as we're planning ahead for this, I think we need to make sure that we put together a good campaign that can educate our residents on what they need to do to prepare their recyclables to be easily taken to this new location. I know that was one of the problems that Meridian iterated numerous times, that a lot of the recycling components are not clean enough to be able to take into a recycle center. So I'd just like us to add to our Admin Public Works discussion, that particular topic, to get the word out to our residents.
Well, we've actually been doing that already. If you've noticed on social media, part of our campaign that we've been underway with relative to the dual stream effort is also awareness of proper recycling. And so we've been trying to take steps in that direction. We've tried to upgrade our website. So certainly that's something that we would see as an ongoing effort. And as I think was mentioned, one of the aspects of the bid or the proposal from Waste Connections is they have a rebate that comes to the city. And the thought there, at least in part, I think, is to use that money for educational purposes. We would certainly have that opportunity to go forward and make sure the word is getting out to residents with regard to proper recycling.
I just think we, as a, as a group, as citizen representatives, need to make sure that we convey that information any and everywhere that we can so that we, I know it takes a little bit longer to rinse out the juice can or whatever, but it only takes a few seconds.
Yes.
Councilor Manton?
Rick, a couple of things. One, regarding this very difficult issue of waste haulers selection, dual stream, single stream, you and your team, but you specifically, I'll point to, has done a stellar job in communications around this issue. I don't know where we'd be without it. And also, just to switch to, I don't know whether it's you or Joe back on the Essent Cabin, and Joe, if it's you, please don't get up.
I don't mind. It's gracious.
Yeah. What, just quickly, what percentage of the original cabin was recovered, number one? And number two, were the thieves ever prosecuted, if you know?
I don't know if the thieves were prosecuted. I will tell you, the main thief did call me and offered his services in terms of reconstruction, which I told him, no, thank you. All of the major components, the logs, both those that formed the foundation, as well as the sides, were recovered. What wasn't was the chinking and some of the roof components. So fortunately, or unfortunately, depending on your view, over time, we've had the opportunity to acquire through donations, logs from other cabins that were demolished. And so we've told our architect, the consultant that we're presenting tonight for consideration by city council, that those may be able to help us reconstruct it completely. And so we don't know for sure, but there are missing pieces.
Thank you. Councilor Stevens?
I guess I had a question for the Davie tree gentleman. On the memo, it shows the floral treatment, was the canopy spray. What about the injection treatment? Are those no longer used or?
That is, it's actually a different chemical. So Florale is a foliar applicant, and it's, you, you apply it to the flower of the tree as it's emerging to prevent, it's a growth regulator, so it prevents the, the formation of the fruit itself.
Okay. And then what's, and what's the, like, is the injection treatment, is, do you not recommend those, or do you not, are they not offered?
It's, yeah, that, that's not for this particular chemical. So different chemicals have different applications. So for example, the Emerald Ash Bore treatment is a injection that goes into the tree itself, whereas this is a foliar applicant that goes on top of the leaves and the flowers of the tree, as opposed to being injected into it.
Okay. But there is an injection treatment that can be used and is that?
Not, not for the growth regulators, no.
Okay. All right. That was my question. Thank you.
Councilor Taylor?
Yeah, I wanted to go back to the Preservation Commission just briefly. I'm one of the two on the council who's going to be liaising with the commission. So painfully aware that, I believe there's a law that says we cannot use city, well, at least we definitely can't use money, and I don't believe city resources in opposing a ballot initiative. So moving forward, I know that a packet is being prepared. Will there be some form of legal? Will there be some form of legal guidelines included in that? Will there be, are we going to be provided legal counsel regarding the parameters? And I guess that question is to either the attorney or Mr. Cross.
Well, I will be attending the first meeting, so.
Yes. Okay. Counselor Stein.
This is a real quick question for Rick. I apologize for missing the special meeting on Friday, I got confused with the emails that were going around. But the question I have is, if we're set upon going back to single stream, because we are in a transition right now, can we just put a hold on that? Because a lot of people are confused, a lot of people have stopped recycling altogether. And we've got these third bids, sometimes fourth. So, could we just put a hold on that, have Meridian come back out, pick up those bids, and just prepare for educating on better single stream?
I think at this point in time, it would be very, very difficult to not transition to the dual stream program after all the work that we've gone into it and the expenditure of funds to acquire and place those containers in residential homes. I mean, Meridian has spent almost half a million dollars on that effort to get those containers, and the date that it's supposed to happen is Monday.
Right. So, are you saying then that single stream is kind of not an option? I mean, it's, we would negotiate, right, and try to get the best price on their bid, but that it would require us to backtrack?
So the way the proposals were requested, the three companies provided pricing for either, well, for both single stream and dual stream. That was a requirement of the proposal that they submitted. So for Waste Connections, we have prices for both single stream and dual stream, and they are more than willing to do either. So if the direction from the council is to switch back to single stream, they can certainly accommodate that with no problem.
Okay.
So just to follow up on Counselor Stein's question, Rick, if our residents would pay, what was it, $3 extra per month?
Well, yes, if you recall back in January when we talked about this, the proposal at that time was dual stream for $3 a month, and then, excuse me, single stream for $3 a month, or dual stream for additional $0.50 a month. That's what we were looking at at that time.
Counselor member Shay, I'm sorry, Counselor Manton.
I think it's important to remember here that this issue is extremely important and confusing enough as is. It was unanimous decision at the Admin and Public Works meeting to go to single stream. And I think we need to stick with that going forward. If we think the public is confused now, go out there with dual stream and then, oh, by the way, we're going back to single stream, fisher cut bait. The approval of the Admin and Public Works Committee was to go to single stream, and I think that's what we need to stick with.
So Counselor Manton, are you advocating that we approach Meridian as to staying with single stream until the contract is up? Counselor Shay.
So, it's my understanding that the new provider will take responsibility for the bins that have been purchased on behalf of the city, is that correct?
That's correct. The proposal's set up so they will essentially acquire those bins from Meridian, regardless of which direction we go.
So it's also my, it's also my understanding that we're proceeding, because we're still under contract with Meridian, with the plan of action with them until the contract is approved by full council with the new provider. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. I think in an effort to, I get that unfortunately, given the timeframe that we had to deal with, the end of the contract with Meridian, the phasing out of single stream with Meridian, we had to make some difficult, tough choices with the information at hand. I would have liked to have had these options back in October, but we didn't. So now we have them, and we need to move forward with those options in the best interest of continuity, of service, and the best cost and options available. And to my mind, that's what the committee approved.
So are you advocating reapproaching Meridian as to staying with single stream for the interim?
My opinion was that when we decided this, we didn't have, we didn't take a direction on how to proceed with Meridian. It was just a question of who the next provider's going to be. And that was voted on Waste Connections with single stream. What happens to Meridian was not discussed, to my mind.
So to follow up on the issue that was raised by Counselor member Stein, I think we're at a point where we're going to have confusion by our residents in either one of two respects. Either, one, we could try to reapproach Meridian and stay with single stream for the interim, and then continue with single stream as recommended, presumably will pass by the council at the renewal. And so there's going to be some confusion about things we put out that they haven't really gotten in the habit of dual stream at this point. Or, we're going to go with dual stream, and then there's going to be confusion in August relative to why we only did that for a couple of months. I guess my thought is, limit the confusion, and it would be better to stay with what we have. But Counselor member Gertano.
Yeah, we knew this was a risk when we were discussing the recycling issue, that we could potentially, and that's what we did, we went to dual stream. And then, we then ended up selecting a new provider, that it could be potentially single or dual. And we knew that was a possibility, and we would have to communicate twice. One for an April change, and one for an August change. And that's what's happened here in this case. To try to change anything, in my opinion, less than a week before would create mass confusion. Folks have received these additional bins. I think we need to stay the course, and we need to continue to work with the Department of Public Works on the new contract. We don't have anything firm and final yet. And then when that time comes, and we're ready, we'll have a good communication plan with a timeline, and we'll be able to move forward. But that's my two cents, just keep things as they're going right now.
Counselor member Dodwell.
Being part of that committee and in part of our discussion last Friday night, or late afternoon, Rick brought up the topic that just because we're going to a different provider does not mean we have to go to single stream. We are going to sit down with this new provider and discuss what the options are with them in more depth, so that we know what the choices are for our residents, and we know whether our residents want dual stream or single stream at that time. So, what do you mean, no, 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 no? We talked about the fact that we needed to talk with the provider.
Counselor Taylor.
Somewhat of a related issue, actually it's a related issue, so I just want to bring it up. I'm getting some comments from residents, very disturbed about the extra bins, I'm sure you've heard that, right? So, I think we're moving towards a single stream. I know there was just a conversation there, but I think we're moving towards single stream. And when we do, if we do, and I think we are, we're going to have to deal with these extra bins. So, I'm just putting it out there, is there anything we can do communication-wise about, hang on, we're getting a new provider? Is Meridian, do you think, going to be responsive in picking up these unwanted extra bins if there's a query? Or is that something where the people are just going to have to stay put with those until the transition?
Well, the way it's envisioned, Counselor Taylor, is that Waste Connections would essentially acquire the containers from Meridian, they will purchase them from Meridian. That would be part of their agreement with the city, that would be detailed. And so that instead of, well, regardless of which direction we go, if it's a single stream, they're going to acquire those containers, and then they will recover them from the residents as well.
Okay, so if people do not want them, then they will, they can be picked up?
Correct.
Great.
Counselor Shay, did you want to say something for...
I do. The motion that passed at Admin was to approve a contract with Waste Connections for single stream. It was floated, the idea of polling residents about which way they prefer. And I made the point that I don't know why people would want to go to dual stream when they have, when they really have enjoyed and want single stream, of course with the confidence that that flow of material will be recycled. And if we provide that, I think Mr. Manton even said it at the last meeting, at the Admin meeting, we've been polling people since last October about this. This was not part of the motion, to go back and discuss this with the public. We've already made the decision, the motion was to approve Waste Connection with single stream. Now, if the council doesn't want to do that, do so at your own risk. But I think, I think that the fact that they're going to pick up the old bins, yes, we're going to be in a transition period with dual stream for a while, until August, because that's where the contract runs with Meridian. In that time, we can educate people that we're now going to, we're moving back to single stream, and you are not going to be responsible for those bins. Appreciate the education that you've allowed us to provide with regard to cleaning up the stream, that still all applies. But I think we ought, we have to be clear about what the committee did. That was approved Waste Connection for single stream.
Thank you. So councilmembers, I think that concludes, I have no one else on the list for discussions, items and questions relative to informational items, so that takes us to for action items. It is now about 7 o'clock on the dime. I would plead ask, given that we have people who've come here for the 7 o'clock meeting, that someone please make a motion to recess the work session, and we'll reconvene it after the council meeting, and we'll take a three-minute break. Made by Counselor Manton, seconded by Counselor member Taylor. Any discussion on the motion to recess? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, we will stand in recess of the work session until after the main council meeting. Thank you.
Are we, are we, where is Greg reset?
I'm a little nervous.
But response to it.
Well, there's...
I mean, to the voters, there's a debate.
Something is, I can discuss it, but I don't have the power to.
So, as long as we don't say, don't vote for us, don't vote for us.
We've sent emails, sending stuff out, and you can't take it.
You can't take the position, you cannot, that would be a much...
Well, it's even more of a step.
You can say vote no.
You can say, if this passes, then all of this...
What will happen?
What will happen?
It is because of the information.
Yeah, we can get all the information.
Well, that'd be housing over there.
I just, I am very careful with that type of stuff.
No, no, no.
I don't like it, you know, especially given that it's just a word, pushy, awful, vicious, vile.
I don't know if you saw, it doesn't...
Yes, get rid of the king. I mean, it was an interesting proposal.
Right, right.
I guess, well, I mean, I'm...
So I talked to Brian from Minnesota State, he's got a fire anniversary, so he knows to keep it short.
We have a mutual friend, Ron with us.
I've been in a golf league with him for probably at least ten years.
Yeah.
Small world.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, that's what I'm in our...
That's okay.
It does not settle like that, you know?
I know, I know.
No, it wasn't, it was like two decades ago.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City Council for the City of Wildwood for Monday, March 25th, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Counselor member Greg Nonny.
Here.
Counselor member McGowan.
Here.
Counselor member Bartoni.
Here.
Counselor member Manton.
Here.
Counselor member Shay.
Here.
Counselor member Dillard.
Here.
Counselor member Dodwell.
Here.
Counselor member Taylor.
Here.
Counselor member Bertolino.
Here.
Counselor member McCutcheon.
Here.
Counselor member Bo.
Present.
Counselor member Jordan.
Here.
Counselor member Stein.
Here.
Counselor member Werther.
Present.
Counselor member Gertano.
Here.
Counselor member Stevens.
Here.
Okay, thank you. For those of you in the audience this evening, thank you for being with us, we appreciate you being here. And if you have a cell phone or other electronic device that is on, if you would please turn it to silent, we would appreciate it. And if you would all please stand with me if you're comfortably able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and as a matter of housekeeping, Counselor Stevens, relative to the rule suspension motion you made previously in work session, if you want that to apply to this meeting, it would need to be made again with a second and voted upon. This is relative specifically to Rule 110.2, 10.8.3.
Yes, I will make that motion.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Yes.
Seconded by Counselor member Jordan. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one opposed, Counselor Manton. Any other opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Next is approval of minutes from the March 11th, 2019 work session and regular agenda, made by Counselor member Greg Nonny. Is there a second to approval of the minutes? Seconded by Counselor member Dodwell. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Moving into public comment, just want to mention a couple of things about that before we begin. This is a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk who is seated to your left of the podium. When your name is called, please approach the podium and state your name and ward. To ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so, there is a five-minute time limitation, and I will let you know when the time limit is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official you would like to respond. That official may make note of it, will make note of it. And at the conclusion of the public participation period, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to that official. The official may choose to respond to your questions after tonight's meeting, and we may also post any responses to the City Council page of our website. And finally, I would just ask that you please be respectful to others in making your remarks, and that means that interrupting others... others and using profane or abusive language are prohibited. And I want to thank everyone in advance for following these. And finally, if you are here, relative to the public hearing, we will have, we will ask for speakers for that later. So this is for anyone who wishes to speak on anything other than that. First speaker card, please.
Greg Berger, Ward 5.
Hi, do we, do we have an ability to share pictures here at all?
We do. Rick, would you please assist when you get a second?
So Greg Berger, I'm in Ward 5. I just wanted to come and give some commentary about some of the erosion that's been discussed tonight. So we're in the Evergreen Forest subdivision, and we've got one of the tributaries that runs behind our house, and we've seen very significant erosion issues, a loss of several feet of the property on the back of the house. We in fact have had, our retaining wall has collapsed and fallen over, and we actually had a creek from, or a tree from across the creek, got the root ball washed out from underneath it, came over, fell on the deck. So we had to tear the deck off and replace it. Luckily, we didn't have any additional damage to the house. We would like, this is obviously a problem that's too big for us to handle as homeowners, even as a homeowners association. This is really out of our grasp, and it's causing pretty significant damage to my property. I know my neighbor has also lost several feet of property in the back of their house. So I don't know if we're able to cast anything up there. It's just on my computer here. Mm-hmm. Is there a way to cast it? Okay. Well, we won't deal with technical issues at this time, but I can send these photos to Deb, and I'm sure she will pass them along. So just wanted to provide that commentary. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Deborah Stein, Ward 7.
Hi, I'm Deborah Stein from Ward 7. I'm here tonight to give public comment about Councilmember Greg Stein. I've been married to Greg for 24 years, so I've known him since he was 19 or 20 years old. I won't say anything about how he's changed since he was 19 or 20 years old. You don't see me much around these meetings, but today is Greg's birthday, and he is sick, and he is coming to the end of his time as a member of this council. So I wanted to come forward and say a few things about his time on the council. Greg and I run a home and family together that is both peaceful and fun, even though our lives revolve around three 16-year-olds, our own twins, and a third teen who we consider our own, although we're no blood relation. I'm very proud of the example that he has set for those children with his public service. Greg got involved initially because he cared about one particular disappearing lake. He took his sworn duty very seriously and came to care also about llamas, gates, zip lines, and ski slopes, city personnel issues, waste management, historic sites, police and school safety, business development, parks, bike trails, road maintenance, superfund sites, and other environmental issues that affect the health and well-being of all the members of our community. Several times each month, he would work all day and then, like all the rest of you, would come and sit for hours upon hours many nights to listen to debate about important issues, all of which he considered to be very important. He would come home to us tired, but knowing that he had done his part to make our community better. One thing that I admire is how he does not treat public service like it is a sport. He doesn't pick a team and fight only for that team. He was independent, and he considered every issue separately for its impact on the city. He didn't just vote with his friends and demonize the other side. He is transparent and honest, and he has tried his best to stay above the infighting that has derailed this council, especially in the past year. He's been very patient with many different personalities and opinions, just like he is at our house, even when he felt like there were certain people who were out of line. In regard to the motion for censure that is on tonight's agenda, I take great issue with the characterization of my husband as a verbal abuser. I know what a verbal abuser is, and he is not one. During a recent meeting, someone also accused him of not liking strong women. I think that's what brought me here tonight, because whoever thinks that has never met me. I am proud that Greg was willing to put the motion on the agenda tonight himself. It speaks to his belief in transparency and fairness and discussion. And Greg, I know what you have sacrificed to be a member of this council, and I want you to know that I admire and I appreciate it on behalf of me and our kids, and my parents, and my brother, all of whom live in the city. In conclusion, I hope that this council will start listening to each other respectfully and seek to understand before speaking. And if you don't learn to do this, I'm afraid that no reasonable citizen will want to run to be a member of this body and wouldn't want to participate in your programs. And I think that that would be a terrible detriment to our city.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Dan McLaughlin, Ward 3.
Dan McLaughlin, Ward 3. I'd like to submit for the record the documents presented at the last council meeting by Councilmember Shea. They were disallowed by the staff from being entered into the public record. My other comments are in response to an email.
Rick?
Response to an email received by the city council identifying me as husband Tammy Shea. My name is Dan McLaughlin. I believe you all know that. I know Steve Taylor knows my name. We have known each other for over 20 years. His pretense that he does not is a sad display of an attempt to discredit me. He knows me because he and I sat at my kitchen table preparing his campaign literature last year, designed all by Councilmember Shea. Tammy and I walked your ward no less than four times in 2018. We sat and listened to your tale of woe about your free speech being violated by the community college, your disgust for the police, the abuse of authority, and the silencing of your rights of expression. Mr. Taylor, your Facebook page, your signs, your mailings, and the strategies of your campaign all came from the efforts of my wife and I. You're welcome. It was implied that I made threatening gestures at Mr. Taylor during the last council meeting. This is completely false and intended to damage me in the eyes of the council. Not a new strategy, right, Mr. Stein? But arguably, the most pathetic to date. For clarification, my gesture was this. I pointed at the screen where candidate Shea's image was. I pointed to Mr. Taylor, and I went like this as a thumbs up for showing the Facebook page. For clarification, I'm sorry, to be clear, thumbs up, good, thumbs down, bad. I believe these are universal symbols of approval and disapproval. Your email indicates an understanding of free expression, but apparently not for me. Given the attacks of free speech in Wildwood, I believe most of you need a civics lesson in, on the First Amendment. My question, if a thumbs up gesture can be considered threatening, then what would the interpretation be of someone speaking from their seat? Talking after being told not to, approaching the council after being instructed that they were out of order, and walking toward the members? Would that be considered losing it? Would that be considered threatening? As residents of Wildwood, it is our right to express approval by clapping, our disapproval by giving a thumbs down, or a sigh, or an eye roll. You either understand this, believe it to be everyone's right, or you don't. You cannot apply this selectivity to maintain your credibility. Violating trust is a sad reflection on your integrity. Ward 4 residents are being duped by your presence on this council. I owe all the residents of Ward 4 an apology for standing at their door, giving my word on behalf of Mr. Taylor. What are you, what are you doing with this email? And your attempts to play victim of a group as you label it is, is profiling, I'm sorry. You are degrading yourself and being the city's lower than I ever, and in bringing the city lower than I ever thought possible. 2020 cannot come fast enough.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Jean Vedvig, Ward 4.
Good evening. Jean Vedvig, 16709 Clayton Road, Wildwood, Missouri, 63011. Tonight, I would like to thank 93.75% of this council who are able to maintain some sort of dignity tonight and support their fellow council members, or council member. I regret that I have to say, Mayor, you spent your last grain of capital and dignity tonight, but I hope we can move past this. It appears to be another election time trick, not too different from last year when, right before the election, you appointed two candidates for the council to the seats, and it didn't work out so well for you. We have the other candidates that are in the seats. And in fact, the one candidate, one, or the one council member won by the largest margin in the city. So I'm not here to criticize, I just wanted to point those things out. And, and also, I think it's important to everyone on the council, tonight, and to the audience, the demonstration of the 15-1 vote tonight tells me all is not lost with this city. Some people think that it is, but the reason we have 16 council members is exactly what happened tonight. We're not going to let one person run the city. The city is to be run by 16 members with a, if you want to call it a team captain. Have any of you ever played sports? You know, there's a captain on the team. But the captain is not the only one that can score the touchdown or the homerun. You need the whole team. And as the population grows out here, we expect you to work together. But if you don't have someone at the helm that's steering the ship, it's going to be a rocky road. But the vote tonight tells me all is not lost. And that means for you too, Mayor, I invite you to be on the team. You currently are the captain. So right this ship. This city was designed to be a vigilant, vibrant team, and every leader needs to bring the team along, not harass, diminish, or attack someone's dignity. Right now, this city, along with the other 93 municipalities in St. Louis County, we're under attack. The city-county merger is the biggest issue that we're going to face in your term. And we can't allow what happened to the pool tax. We lost pool tax money because we were asleep at the wheel. We hired the wrong guy to be a lobbyist, and we didn't need a lobbyist. We need a captain, and we need a team to be watchful over our money and legislation in St. Louis County and Jefferson City that applies to this city. So you can look away from the council and appoint committees. There is nothing better than a citizen-driven committee. But this council is who was elected to represent this city. These people have voices with the people in Jefferson City and St. Louis County and the state of Missouri regarding how we should approach the merger. And yes, you're correct, we can't spend money on the issue, but we can educate the population. There is a way to give information. You don't have to take a position, but there is definitely a way to educate the population. And by golly, if we don't do it, we will lose the right to self-determination and the very reason that we incorporated this city. So get on the team, and let's get going. I appreciate a citizens committee, but you need to have confidence in these people. They were elected by us, and they're very smart, and they have the passion to take this city forward and oppose the merger. And if I win, I'll be on the team too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Tom Dunn, Ward 8.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Dunn. I've been a resident of Wildwood for eight years.
That microphone goes up a little higher if you want. There you go.
Thanks for the tip.
You're welcome.
I should know this stuff, but anyway. As I was saying, I've been a resident for Wildwood for the last eight years. I just want to let you know that I am on the candidate, I'm a candidate for the Board of Education in Rockwood School District. I just want to let you know that I'll be here representing all the residents of Wildwood and their kids.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Crystal Nakoun, Ward 7.
Good evening. I just want to bring up one thing on the agenda, so talking about business tonight. I see on the agenda is another appointment for Ward 7, and what I want to bring to your attention, as you guys know, I'm a Ward 7 resident, and we've discussed this quite some time on the appointments. Again, respectfully, I don't know Mr. Dave Williams, so I'm not really going to comment on a character or his credentials, because I don't think that's necessary here. But I do think it's necessary that we do look at our city charter and what our city charter actually states and what we have to follow. These are the rules and guidelines that, Mayor, that you have always asserted to and that we should, should be following. So I can put this up on the board if you guys would like to read along, or I can just kind of read where I want to start. So my question would be for maybe the attorney Young, is that how do you interpret or define the word "different" when it states in Section 4.7, Section A under Appointments? And I will summarize by not reading the whole thing, because it doesn't really apply. But in summary, what it states is that if the city council fails to consent to an appointment, the mayor shall make an appointment of a different replacement within 30 days of the council's failure to consent. So what's in play here is straight from the charter. There's a couple of questions that I have. It's my understanding and what I could find and count, Mr. Williams has been presented over the last year, three, four, five times, more than once. The definition of different, in my opinion, is different. It doesn't become the same. It stays different. It's a different location. It's a different proposal. Anything that in business is different, it doesn't mean to bring it back. It doesn't state, you know, something that's previous. So it's really not clear, and I think that the interpretation needs to be defined here. And if that is truly defined, the way that I read it and my understanding... this city forward and oppose the merger. And if I win, I'll be on the team too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Tom Dunn, Ward eight.
My name is Tom Dunn. I've been a resident of Wildwood for eight years.
That microphone goes up a little higher if you want. There you go.
Thanks for the tip.
You're welcome.
I should know this stuff, but anyway. As I was saying, I've been a resident for Wildwood for the last eight years. I just want to let you know that I am a candidate for the Board of Education in Rockwood School District, and just want to let you know that I'll be here representing all the residents of Wildwood and their kids.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Crystal Nakun, Ward seven.
I just want to bring up one thing on the agenda, so talking about business tonight. I see on the agenda is another appointment for Ward seven, and what I want to bring to your attention, as you guys know, I'm a Ward seven resident, and we've discussed this quite some time on the appointments. Again, respectfully, I don't know Mr. Dave Williams, so I'm not really going to comment on a character or his credentials, because I don't think that's necessary here. But I do think it's necessary that we do look at our city charter and what our city charter actually states and what we have to follow. These are the rules and guidelines that, Mayor, that you have always asserted to and that we should be following. So I can put this up on the board if you guys would like to read along, or I can just kind of read where I want to start. So my question would be for maybe the attorney, Young, is that how do you interpret or define the word "different" when it states in Section 4.7, Section A, under appointments? And I will summarize by not reading the whole thing, because it doesn't really apply. But in summary, what it states is that if the city council fails to consent to an appointment, the mayor shall make an appointment of a different replacement within 30 days of the council's failure to consent. So what's in play here is straight from the charter. There's a couple of questions that I have. It's my understanding and what I could find and count, Mr. Williams has been presented over the last year three, four, five times, more than once. The definition of different, in my opinion, is different. It doesn't become the same, it stays different. It's a different location, it's a different proposal. Anything that in business is different, it doesn't mean to bring it back. It doesn't state, you know, something that's previous. So it's really not clear, and I think that the interpretation needs to be defined here. And if that is truly defined, the way that I read it and my understanding, "different" should not be bringing Mr. Williams or anybody else that's been brought forward by the mayor again. He has the right to bring others, which he has, but I think bringing the same person, we keep doing this big circle. And I think that Ward seven has made it clear that we are in favor of Mr. Archesky. The mayor has put a nice PowerPoint slide together, and he's made his interpretation of what was voted on last April. But again, that's his understanding and not what the actual charter has stated. So if anybody up there wants to answer my question or give it a shot, but I think it's Mr. Young that needs to give legal opinion and understanding of what that word applies and how it validates the charter, invalidates the charter, or neither or. But again, I think that I would encourage the council, once he gives his rendering or his opinion, that again, it's an opinion. You don't have to abide by what his understanding is. And under the law, I'd like to know how the word "different" is applied under the law, and how it's defined, and what other precedents that has made, especially in city government. So again, I'm not in favor of Mr. Williams' appointment this evening, with no disrespect to him whatsoever. I'm in favor of keeping Mr. Archesky for the Ward seven residents. I think he's well-qualified, he's highly educated, and he is a great asset to this. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to your answer.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Karen Shealy, Ward five.
I wanted to speak on two things today. One is the appointment for P&amp;G, Mr. Archesky. I am in favor of keeping Mr. Archesky on the P&amp;G. I am not going to speak to the term limits, because it's a battle you're going to have to have. But the thing is, is that there are committees in the city that require a certain amount of certain types of background. And Mr. Archesky, he sat behind me last week at the T-Cut meeting, or two weeks ago, and he explained to me, I'm an engineer, and so he explained, so I can, you know, I'm not a developer or anything, but I understood some of this. He explained to me the details of some of the problems with Accoli Place and why it's been difficult and that. And, you know, I'm listening to him, and I'm thinking, what if we had eight doctors on that committee? They'd be lost. There's a certain amount of technical expertise on that committee now, and it needs to remain. And, you know, I haven't seen, and I think people on this committee have tried to make this point to you, Mr. Bowen, that that is important. And, you know, I would think it would be a great step forward for you to just acknowledge that this committee has generally made that point to you, and that it is a valid, real thing for the city, and its importance. You can't just put certain people on these committees, you know? It takes a certain amount of expertise. So the other thing I want to talk about is what Jean mentioned a little bit, and I asked last week. Last week, Mr. Bowen, you attempted to make Councilmember Boe move on the dais, and I got up and I asked you why. I asked Mr. Boe, if you had asked for that, and you both replied, no, you didn't request that, and I asked you the question, and you did not answer me. You didn't, at the time when answers came up, you didn't answer. So today, I mean, in case some of you out there in livestream land don't understand, the same attempt was made. Before the six o'clock work session started, Mr. Bowen moved the chairs for no obvious reason. I mean, it doesn't make any sense, and people ask you why, why you're doing this. And Mr. Boe said, I don't think it's right for me to move, and he stood his ground. And then we had to have a suspension of rules to allow that to take place, and I'm really glad that 93-point-something percent of you voted for that, because honestly, it's a big stinking waste of time. It's ridiculous. So I would hope that you could get the message, okay? And you can stare down at your paper. But these kind of things are a waste of time, and they breed dissension among the council. So please, change your behavior.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Dave Williams, Ward seven.
Dave Williams, Ward seven. I'm here to talk not about myself tonight, I'm here to make some comments about my good friend, Tom Dunn, who is running for the Rockwood School Board position. There's a vote coming up on April 2nd. I've known Tom and his family pretty much the entire time that they've lived here in Wildwood, and I got to be honest with you, even though he's from Chicago and a diehard This is the audience participation time, when you can hurl insults or other things. But aside from baseball, Tom is a gentleman of impeccable character. He's extremely intelligent, he's very thorough, very thoughtful, he thinks of issues that are important for all of us, with a very wide breadth and depth of experience. I think he would be an excellent candidate for the school board, and for those of you who have kids here, I don't think you can do better than Tom Dunn on April 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other speaker cards? All right. That concludes public participation. Moving to... Yep, sorry. Yep.
I received a question directly from Mr. McLaughlin. He said the question I would like to ask...
Can you, do you have your microphone on?
Sorry. I received a direct question from Mr. Dan McLaughlin, so I take a moment, not, just respond. So, overall, yes, well, you did receive a question. The question I would like to ask you is if...
Hold on a minute. Councilmember Taylor, just one second, just one second. Mr. McLaughlin, please, just, please. Councilmember Taylor, what is the specific question you believe that you heard?
The question he said is, the question I would like to ask you, and it was regarding sign up and sign down, says, how would one interpret standing up and asking a question if one had been asked not to do that? It was a direct question. Now, that said, for the sake of comity, for the sake of efficacy, I will, if Mr. McLaughlin does not desire a response, I will withdraw, but I would refer people to the livestream. There was a direct question, one that was meant to embarrass, but I will withdraw.
Thank you. Okay. Moving into mayor announcements and appointments, we have with us this evening a guest, Mr. Brian Holzer from Missouri, Metro City District, sorry.
Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District.
Yep, thank you for being here. He is the CEO of the company, I believe, executive director. And so what we have on our minds this evening is erosion. And I don't know how much of the work session you were able to be here for. Were you here for any of the work sessions?
I wasn't here for any of them.
Okay. So there were several questions from council members, and this has been, as you may know, for our city, given the creeks and watersheds and so forth that we have, it's been going on for quite some time. I understand there's a ballot measure and so forth, so I thought it would be ideal to invite you to come this evening and maybe say a few remarks relative to what your goals are relative to this issue, and then field a few questions from our council.
I'd love to. It's very timely. So, again, I'm Brian Holzer, I'm the executive director and CEO of the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District. All of you have a packet in front of you, I'm going to talk from the one-page sheet. It says, Project Clear Stormwater Proposition S at a glance. That chart's real important, because it looks a lot like what'll be on the ballot April 2nd. Okay. Quick background, MSD is a municipal organization formed by a provision of the state constitution, and per that state constitution, we actually have our own charter that was voted in place. It's our organic law, it's voted in by the residents of our sewer district. Keeping that in mind, we have the ability to serve all St. Louis city and all St. Louis County. We just do that by folks who request to be annexed. Particularly to Wildwood, our line is about Highway 109. There's some areas west of that we serve, but not all of the seat of Wildwood. So this just applies for those who fit within MSD's boundaries. MSD has two utilities. We're a wastewater utility and a stormwater. We run them separately, separate revenues. I'm going to talk on the stormwater side, and it's going to get right to the question you asked. There's three major services MSD can provide. One is a regulatory function with regard to stormwater development and pollutants and stormwater runoff. It's paid for by a two-cent property tax that we already collect. Three years ago, the citizens of our district were willing to put in place a 10-cent property tax for the first time that allowed us funds to operate and maintain the public storm sewer system throughout our district. Particularly to Wildwood, that would be the inlets, manholes, the storm sewers that mostly serve along the streets and backyards. Prior to that, we owned the assets, but had no revenues to operate and maintain. Today, we do. The last third service that we can provide, and that's the point of the election, is to address flooding and erosion problems that occur that are not part of MSD's infrastructure. Local creeks, local streams, backyard flooding, swales. We want to address those issues. We've identified, best we know right now, about a half billion dollars worth of issues within our boundaries. And now going down the sheet, our plan is to allow a voted rate to go in front of the voters, and if they approve that, it'd provide $30 million per year to go towards those problems. Kind of talking off the sheet now. In order to accomplish that, before I get to the chart, the average cost for the average customer would be $2.25 per month, or $27 a year, for us to generate $30 million a year to address these issues district-wide. Look at the chart, and I'll just give you an explanation, is what everybody will see on the ballot. We're going to do it by the amount of impervious area. That's what the vote's going to be, is of charge, to charge people based on the amount of impervious area on their property. Impervious area, water hits, runs off, it doesn't soak in the ground, rooftops, driveways, sidewalks, those types of things. So if you're looking at that chart, and you look where it says Tier 2, for those residential properties between 2,001 and 3,600 square feet, we're planning on charging $2.25 per month. That represents one-half of the residential properties within MSD's boundaries. For folks who have a slightly smaller home, slightly smaller amount of impervious area, between 200 and 2,000 square feet, we're looking to charge $1.42 per month. That represents about one-quarter of the residential customers throughout MSD's boundaries. And then there's a Tier 3 and a Tier 4 for those properties that have much larger amounts of impervious area on their properties. Unlike the property taxes that serve the balance of our programs, we're going to be charging commercial, industrial, as well as not-for-profit entities. So this would be universities, churches, schools, hospitals, city halls, anything that's not in the public transportation right-of-way would be billed on impervious area. We're going to do that by the column, if you're looking at the chart, says non-residential, multifamily. We're going to bill them by ERUs. ERU is an equivalent residential unit, and the average residential unit in our district's 2,600 square feet. So the idea is to count how many 2,600 feet there are on non-residential properties, build them accordingly. Good examples, a commercial property with 10,000 square feet of impervious area, we'd take that 10,000 divided by 2,600 square feet, which is one ERU, it comes up to 3.85. We'd round that up to four, times $2.25, that commercial property would be billed $9 per month for the service. If you take a look at the chart, the residential properties provide just under $14 million to $30 million, and then the non-residential properties would provide just over $16 million for a total of a $30 million program. This is what's going to be on the ballot April 2nd. We're doing as much as we can to inform people what's out there. You've had this discussion earlier. We are not advocating one for another. It's just a proposition. There's enough people with these types of problems, we wanted to bring it in front of the voters. If the voters say yes, we'll start collecting the rate in January 2020, we'll provide the service. If the voters vote no, we won't provide the service.
Thank you for that. Mr. Holzer, and just to get some background relative to Wildwood for the council's benefits, of the 500 million, I believe, you mentioned in needed repairs, do you know off the top of your head how much of that, or a percentage, if you want to answer that way, is within the boundaries of Wildwood?
I don't know exactly. If you look at the slide presentation, or, there's another one-page document, it looks like this, it's a scatter map of all the things we know about. I don't know exactly how many are in Wildwood. If you look at our rate proposal, it's on our website, it lists all of the location of all 500 projects we'd eventually like to get to, as well as the ones we're going to do in the first two years. I would tell you, this is not an all-inclusive list. Most of the dots that you'd see on that map are problems in areas where we had isolated areas of tax collection, and we were able to solve problems. When we can solve problems, more people tell us about their problems. We suspect there's a lot more dots than what's on this map. What I would offer is, I can take this back, and I can work with staff, and both in the immediate first two years, as well as the long term, we can give you what projects we currently know of, just as a follow-up, and we do this with all the citizens. If you have a stormwater problem, call us and let us know, it's the only way we know about it. And another thing is, if you called and the situation's gotten worse, call us again.
Okay. So if you could get maybe that answer to us, if you could send it to Steve's, we can distribute to the council and me relative to just where we sort of fit, I guess?
Sure.
And then, secondly, relative to prioritization, let's assume this passes, what, if anything, can we do as a city, since we have some fairly severe instances of this, what can we do to expedite and follow through with your prioritization plan to get those addressed before, I mean, in some cases, residents are nearing losing their homes or what have you?
Sure. I think it's letting us, it's simply letting us know what they are. Let us do the initial evaluation. We'll field investigate every complaint, so we'll know where they fit. And also, if something changes, let us know, so we can do the appropriate calculation. We'll always do it, and we'll program it based on the prioritization. If some becomes a real emergency, we'll take care of those. We do have folks in our district, their garages have already been eaten, the erosion's up to the back of their concrete patio, we've got some really severe things we got on the very front end of the program. But we need to know what's out there, so we can do some scheduling and make sure we get the ones that are worst first.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Greg Noddy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got some questions for you. On the stormwater implementation sheet, it's part of your packet here, okay? The third item down says, all other customers not receiving MSD wastewater services will be billed on a quarterly basis. Who are they?
So we have customers throughout our district who don't receive a wastewater bill because they're on septic tanks, and that's the usual example. And so folks on septic tanks, folks who get wastewater service are getting a monthly bill, so this charge will just show up as another line on the monthly bill. If they're not currently getting wastewater service from us, it doesn't make sense for us to try and bill and collect $2.25 per month. So what we'll do is, we'll bill them every quarter. So there will be folks who are getting a wastewater bill now who are not wastewater customers.
Well, you know, you've sort of, there's a squiggly red line here that sort of shows the end of your, I kind of know where the end of your MSD services here. You know, I live west of 109, I'm on a septic system, I get no services from you of any kind. We deal with a runoff in our area on our own. Are you going to bill people in my area for impervious services? I thought we had a court case over this that stopped that a few, a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
There was a bill that passed with regard to the non-voted-on charge that we tried to put in place. Right now, if you're in MSD's boundaries, even if you don't receive the wastewater service, you are collecting stormwater service, you're paying those taxes right now, you would be billed for this also.
Does the stormwater service include doing damage to Cox Creek when you build a line and erode the creek even more? I thought that one of the things that they proposed to us, that you all proposed to us when you tried to bill us the last time, although we weren't getting your services, that you were going to manage the creeks. Does managing the creeks mean that you dig them out, not replace any of the riprap or anything else that is required to keep the creek from eroding? Is that part of what you're doing?
Yeah. There was never a commitment to manage the creeks, they're privately owned. We do have the ability, it's a charter ability we have, is to charge this and collect the monies and go in on private property, perform this work, and then turn the piece back over to the local residents.
I distinctly remember that you all said, when you tried to get this passed a couple of years ago, and then there was a court case trying to stop you from charging people who didn't get your service, and the court agreed with that, by the way, that part of the reason that you were going to charge is not only because of impervious services, but because you were managing our creeks. Are you managing the creeks?
Yeah. I believe I was the one making that presentation here 11 years ago, and I don't recall that I said that. It wouldn't, I... I did not say that.
Well, I don't remember you saying it, but it certainly was in the paper, and it said that one of the reasons it was published was that you guys were going to manage creeks. But I'll forego that for the moment, but let me ask you a question. You guys have known about Cox Creek for a long time. That's not a new issue. That was here before the city of Wildwood. In fact, St. Louis County was trying to deal with it, as I recall. So you had to know about Cox Creek. When you guys came in and laid a sewer line, and you did damage to the creek's surfaces and some of the adjacent banks, did you not know that you were going to have to repair that damage?
So if there's any damage you feel we did in the installation of a sanitary sewer and didn't fix it, we can go back and fix those. Let us know which ones they are, and we'll take a look. If we damage and have to do damage with regard to a sanitary sewer project, we'll we have the work after we go through the sanitary sewer.
Well, then you need to talk to our Director of Planning, Mr. Vunich. I'm sure he'd be happy to show you some of the pictures that have happened to Cox Creek, which is partly your responsibility. I'll grant you, it wasn't entirely your responsibility, but it was partly your responsibility. And it seems that you should be at least held responsible for that part of it, and that is certainly within your catchment area, because it's well east of Highway 109. So that's, you know, that's an issue that needs to be addressed. But I want to make absolutely clear about, sure about something. You're not fixing to try to charge people that are west of 109, who are on septic systems, that are not in your jurisdiction, any kind of a fee, is that correct?
No. Anybody in our jurisdiction, not within our municipal boundaries, will not be billed this. They will not be billed.
I hope not.
Councilor Shay?
Yeah.
Hello. Hi. Over here.
Oh, back there. I'm sorry.
No problem. So, good points made. So if you are in the district, but you're not on your service, you will be charged? Because we have properties in my ward that are not, that are in the district but are not on your service.
Right. If you're not collecting wastewater service, you won't get a wastewater bill. If you're within those boundaries right now, you are paying through property tax the first two services. You will be billed for this third service as well, yes.
You will be assessed this increase if it passes?
Yes.
Okay. Some questions regarding the calculations on impervious surfaces. Could you explain how that's done? I'm assuming there's some aerial photos involved, but how do you reassure the residents about the accuracy of those calculations?
Sure. So it is done by aerial photography. It's something that the area's flown every one to two years already. We are a consortium with USGS and some other municipalities to do that. You do the overflights. We just did them this past winter when the leaves are not on the trees. You fly the area. Computer takes a first shot at outlining the impervious areas, and we won't count the impervious areas in public right-of-way, just on your property. We outline those, and then we do a manual check of those. That'll be the basis of the billing. As of a week ago, we right now have in our system, you can go on our website, enter your address, and it'll tell you how many hundreds, how many square feet you have based on a flight two years ago, if you want to check that. If, as we're doing the billing, a question comes up, and it turns out there was an error, and you're actually being billed too much, we'll go back, not just change it then, but we'll go back in any previous billings and reduce those costs as well.
And what is the manual check, what is that process? How do you manually check those aerials?
Yeah, and I'm not technically the guy that does it, but whenever something looks kind of strange or doesn't work right, as well as a random check, an individual takes the actual area view and makes sure that the computers properly outline impervious area by looking at it by eye.
I would imagine the bulk of your assessments for calculation are done based on aerials and probably not a lot of manual checking going on?
No, and not, because if you take a look at the tiers, there's an awful lot of properties between 2,500 and 3,000 square feet.
Right.
There's not a lot of room. If we make a 50-square-foot error, it's not going to change the monthly billing.
Gotcha. Okay. So you just said not right-of-way, so sidewalks would not be calculated for that?
Right. Anything that's on the public right-of-way line, or if they're private streets, we also won't count what is the equivalent around private streets that are serving multiple customers.
Okay. So we're talking pool decks, patios, and wood decks? Would that be? I'm just trying to figure out what services you're looking at.
So wood decks, we try not to, that are slatted where the water would go through, because we don't know what's underneath. Pools, I would, I'd have to ask my people, but based on what we did 11 years ago, we did not count the area that was water, we would count the deck.
Okay.
So I would have to check. I'm not really sure on those.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Bertolino?
Yeah, Brian, thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Quick question. I certainly don't want to spend the city's money if we don't have to, but if we, the city, identify what we believe to be a significant erosion problem, okay, and we come to you and say, "Check this out," and your assessment is, "Well, based on all the other priorities, no, we're not going to work on this," can the city still step in, engineer it ourselves, do the work, even though, again, don't want to spend money that we don't have to, but if MSD says, "No, we can't fix this," is there any prohibition on the city taking action to go ahead and fix the problem?
Every municipality throughout the district boundaries have the right to do that. I think the only thing I'd offer is check with us first, because sometimes we can share this, where, for instance, the usual model is if a city comes in and pays for the engineering itself and frees up dollars, if that was in our sequence, sometimes something can be moved up one or two years of our funding, and we can actually work with the city and share funds if the priorities happen to match up. So before you start that, I'd always ask MSD, because there's a chance we might be able to contribute dollars.
Thank you.
Councilor Stevens?
Hi. I have a quick question on the math. So 562 million needed for 500 projects over a 30-year period. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, but 562 million over 30 years, you know, that's only 18-point-something million, 18.7 million a year needed. This would raise 30 million a year. Like, what am I missing here? Like, it seems like that you're asking for a lot more than what would cover the cost of the projects that you have.
So I may have gone through this pretty fast, as far as the timing. So there's a lot of other things that went into it, but we're 500, 550 million worth of work that we know is there now. We suspect some will disappear, and we suspect there'll be a lot more we get. But the calculation was, can we get it done in about 25 or 30 years? So the 30 million per year will not change. We will be collecting 30 million per year without inflation. That 500 to 550 will inflate in cost as we do it further out in the future. So we're looking at kind of a 25 to 30-year time period to get through all the projects if we collected at 30 million per year. What we will be doing every five years is, we will be polling folks to say, "Hey, does this still make sense? Have we taken care of the important stuff, and you'd like for us to lower the rate, keep it the same? Would you like us to come back to the voters if you think we should be going faster?" That's something we'll be doing in five years, 2022, 2023, once a program's been in place, to get a check on how is this going, and what do folks think about funding that.
Okay. And so the 30-year plan, you would still come back in another five years and possibly ask for an additional raise?
No. We're going to check with folks and see what they think. I will tell you, if 80% of the people polled said, "We'd like a chance to raise this," we would probably put it on a ballot and give them the chance. I don't suspect that will happen. I think what will happen is, hey, it's good, keep going. There's a chance, at least after maybe five or 10 years, folks say, "Hey, the problems you're solving are pretty minor. We don't think it's worthwhile, the public paying for this anymore," and our board would unilaterally lower the rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Garitano?
Yeah, I have a question here. I'm looking at the list of projects, and a couple of observations. Wildwood only has two projects listed on this multi-page report. Wildwood is the third-largest city in the state by area. Granted, I know that only a portion of the city is provided service by you. But with only two projects, not even the Cox Creek area, which we've heard so much about, that is an issue. And also, a project that I brought to all your attention about a year ago, or not a project, but an issue with a resident, we had Jason Muse come out, and I was plugged in with Lance Lacome, who I believe is involved with this effort here to get this...
Lance doesn't work for MSD anymore.
Okay. So about a year ago, these two were involved, and we have an issue here with the resident who has an excessive amount of water in the backyard that's getting to the point where it goes up against the door of the basement, the walkout basement. And we're like, we need to get this on the list. Now, it's not reassuring to see this, that it's on the list. Some have in a hard time understanding why we should buy into this, when we're not seeing projects, and yet I see cities with multiple pages of projects here. How come we didn't get so much of the share?
So help me with which list you're looking at. Is it the first two or three years, or is it the full 500-project list?
I'm looking at the one that says the Prop S Stormwater Project sorted by municipality.
Joe.
It's a 31-page list.
Let's get your microphone.
Oh, it's a 31-page list.
Okay.
And only two-line items are in Wildwood.
That would be based on what we've got in our database right now. That's the only explanation I have. So if there are other things that aren't on the list that we haven't seen for whatever reason, we get that, we'll put them in. We have committed the first two years of the program, but we will continuously reprioritize projects as we move forward.
Well, I think we need to get more reassurance that we're going to get our items, or they're on a list somewhere, because to be asked to pay for this and not see a whole lot, it's a challenge, you know? It's like, people are asking me, "Well, why should we? What are we getting out of it? What projects are happening in Wildwood?" And right now, I only see two of them here. So it's a tough sell, is my point. And so how can you tell us here that we need to get more of our items on this list here? How can we work with you?
So I think what we'll do is, I'm back in the office Wednesday, and we'll just have staff call, your staff here in Wildwood, and find out what, make sure everything we know about, that we've got a copy of, of any stormwater problems that you know about. The only way to get them is from the citizens or the city. And we'll start soliciting as quickly as we... And I would offer the city, every time you have one, check with staff, make sure it's on our list, but the other thing, again, is if something gets worse or changes, it's important for us to know, too, before we start reprioritizing problems.
Well, and I understand you're prioritizing, and obviously, you're going to have issues where they need to be addressed sooner than later. But I see some here that say yard flooding. It doesn't say much as to what extent. But, you know, Cox Creek, I mean, you don't stop hearing about it here in Wildwood. So that's one area that needs desperate attention. And then the one case where I had the resident that I brought to your attention at MSD to say, and Jason Muse, I don't know if you know the name, I think he's like an analyst or a field engineer, he came out, I met with him on the site, and we looked at the location there, and he's like, "Yeah, we're doing this program here, and, you know, we need to get it on the list."
Let me, this may answer my question. How long ago did you bring that to us?
That was April of last year.
So what I'm going to suggest is, and I was going to do this later, but your questions and your points, Councilor Garitano, are right in line with this. Without objection from the council, we would ask Joe Vennich, our Director of Planning, to make a list of all of our affected parcels, creeks, in the city, prioritize those, run that by the council, and we can discuss whether, at some point, city involvement in terms of cost would be appropriate, and get that to you, and if we get that to you, win or lose on the ballot measure, I guess my question is, could we maybe have another meeting with you here to kind of go through those ones? We have some, you know, additional data to discuss?
Sure.
Okay. Is there any, just one second, please. Is there any objection from any member of the council to that approach? Okay. So we'll get that to you soon.
Thank you.
The one thing I'd offered yours, I know it was about 14 or 15 months ago where we developed that list, because that was just the timing for us to get to our rate commission. So some of it is data. If we've received anything in the last 12 or plus-so months, you're not going to see on that list, but they may be on the master list in the office.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor McCutcheon?
Hi, Brian. Shay, you're coming. We've got a lot of residents in Ward Five that have major concerns with Cox Creek. We have Baja Court that's been on your list for quite some time. I think it was slated to be mitigated in 2020, and I just hope that you check that out and make that happen. So we had a couple of MSD reps come out, I guess it was last year, and walk part of Cox Creek behind Birch Forest. And at the time, their comment was, "Well, we don't have any money. You know, vote for the tax increase, and then we'll have money." But that doesn't mean that you're going to have money for Wildwood or Ward Five. So what I'm asking is that you make yourself available, come over to Ward Five, walk the creek behind Birch Forest and Evergreen Forest with me, and give me your personal opinion on what should or should not be done, and what will or will not be done. So if you're going to talk to Mr. Vunich, he can give me your information, or if you want to email me, I can do that.
I don't want to commit it will be me specifically.
I'd really like to have you there.
I will bring staff.
You're the CEO.
I'll also bring staff who knows what they're doing, so...
That's fine, as long as you're there with them.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Manton?
Brian, thank you for coming. You weren't here at the work session, so I'll just say this. Some of the biggest contributors to stormwater runoff, in my opinion, are the utilities themselves. And as an example, I put out, I will point out Cox Creek from Church Road to University Park. You put that sanitary sewer trunk in, and that was good, but you replaced, you done away with a lot of trees and undergrowth, done away with a lot of grand trees, too, in the process. Ambern is guilty of similar things. And then you say you'll only replace it with grass. You need to rethink that policy, and I appreciate it if you would, because that's a big contribution, or contributor, I should say, to runoff, is the utilities themselves and the work and the damage they do, quite frankly, when they remove trees, grand trees and undergrowth, and replace it with grass. You really need to take a look at that policy. Okay?
Appreciate that.
Councilor Stein?
So before I ask my question, I need to ask a city attorney. So I'm a resident of Lake Chesterfield subdivision, and is it acceptable for me to ask a question about the lake?
I was just getting ready to go ahead. Yeah. It's... I don't see any reason why you couldn't ask the question.
Okay. Well, I certainly won't be voting on any of this, except in the ballot box. So I live in Lake Chesterfield, as I said, and this is an issue, and I'm sure you know the lake.
I believe I do. I'll find out.
Yeah, so this is the lake, the 26-acre lake, and about 15 years ago, it went down the drain in about eight hours, and the subdivision has tried multiple times to kind of shore it up. And we've done a lot of studies and realized that, you know, we need some additional help. Now, we have asked, the HOA has asked several times for MSD to, you know, come and consider the stormwater, it's a stormwater runoff, and, you know, help us to figure out how we can resolve this issue. Because a couple of issues. We've got a major secondary street in Wildwood, Pier Side Lane, that goes over the dam, and some of the geotechnical surveys that have been done have shown, not only are there additional sinkholes, but there's also, the dam is saturated. So the concern now is, if water is held in that lake, the dam can give way, and that will cause all sorts of problems downstream. So, again, we have asked MSD several times to just engage with us, and it's always been turned down. And so I would like to request that you guys do talk to us about this. It's a major issue. We've got, Crystal, how many homes are in the watershed? 676 in Lake Chesterfield, but there's about eight other subdivisions that flow into this lake.
Right.
1,400. But when the lake was built, the maintenance of that lake was not added to the deeds of the other subdivisions.
Correct.
So we've got an issue where it affects 1,400 homes, a decent-sized area of Wildwood, and we need some additional technical help, I think, to figure this out. But it's a major stormwater issue for us in Ward Seven. I always like to say, whenever we bring up the lake, that, you know, Ward Seven, we're completely built out, and we don't ask for much. But this is one thing that I think we agree on pretty solidly, and there's building consensus on this council, that we need MSD to engage with us on this effort.
And Mr. Holster, before you answer, just to tie onto that, because this is a lengthy, another lengthy discussion. I was actually going to ask, and not to blindside you with this, because I know you came to talk about the erosion issue, but would you be willing to, you personally, and whoever you want to, whomever you want to bring from your team, be willing to have a meeting with the two council members from Ward Seven, HOA participants, leadership, and myself, relative to Lake Chesterfield?
I can do that. I will let you know, I sympathize with your situation. There are a lot of subdivisions who are responsible on their own for their detention facilities. And obviously, this was before MSD was responsible for stormwater, and this multiple subdivision into one lake with only the folks around the lake being responsible financially for the maintenance of that. I know we were definitely not doing anything when there was absolutely no funding to do anything. So let us take a look, is there a chance we can provide, if this passes? I mean, we'll come look, anyway. But if it passes, is there something we can do? I would just have to compare it against everything else and just see where we were financially, as far as assisting with some technical assistance on some of these problems.
And that's fine. That satisfies my question, because I just wanted to have you guys come to the table and to discuss it with us.
So I would, it's a good time for us to renew it, but I'd ask, let's wait till the election happens, because exactly what we could contribute in the discussion probably depends on what the April 2nd vote is.
So I would ask, if Councilor Stein, you and Councilor Werther are agreeable to this, that Joe circulate email to get dates, and we get something set after the election, per your request?
If you don't mind, yes.
Is that agreeable? Okay. All right. Councilor Taylor, I think you're the last person.
Great, the last, that's good. We've gotten to the point where everything has been said, but not everyone has said it, so I'll cap it off. No, I'd like to associate myself with my colleagues' comments regarding the trees and replacing trees with grass. I mean, these are streamed areas, that's one of the reasons why we incorporated. I have a question, though. Do you, does MSD, when it comes to these streams, have any enforcement authority when it comes to people placing trash in the stream? Do you look at that issue? I, so could you give me a answer to that?
So let me give you what we can do there. The biggest part we have is a regulatory function through our Environmental Compliance Division. So any kind of dumping of trash, oils, leaves, grass, let us know. It's an illegal discharge, and there's things we can do about to let folks know. As far as things that look kind of like blockage, it's apparent that will cause significant flooding. There's something we can probably go in and do. It's a new service we offered with regard to Prop S three years ago. It primarily applies to bridge blockages. It's an extra service, but in the creeks and streams, we'll do it if there's significant blocking. And oftentimes, depending on the types of discharges and the types of things put in the creeks and streams, it's not only us, but Missouri Department of Natural Resources regulates that. And then if there's work in the creek, even the Corps of Engineers potentially does. But we would manage all those individual entities who might have an interest.
I wanted that answer because there is some illegal discharge happening now and then, with people dumping things from RVs and stuff like that. So if you could provide the council with the appropriate number that we could publicize, and also, I think the blockage is serious, because a lot of people, if it occurs, it's because if flooding occurs, I mean, you're not covered under homeowners. A lot of people don't know you need to get, you know, the federal flood insurance, which is good to do in this area, even though it hasn't flooded. But, so if you could provide the number for people to call on compliance issues, it would be appreciated.
Mayor, may I ask a favor? I'm not writing this down and bringing anybody with me. Can I count on staff to bring me all the requests that have come to make sure I get them all? Is that possible?
You can, and we'll try not to add any to it.
No, I would prefer you do add to it. If you don't mind, please add to it, any questions you have.
All right. All right. Seeing nothing further, thank you so much, Mr. Holster, for spending your time with us this evening and answering questions on these important issues. I think we've made progress, and I look forward to making even more progress with you on behalf of our residents.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving next to appointments, we have one to the Ward Seven Planning and Zoning Commission position. Given the past voting record on this, unless someone wants to have a vote, we can consider this to be here for the 30-day compliance with the charter. Seeing none, moving to public hearings, and what, I'm sorry, yes, Councilor Shea?
So you're just putting this on here to keep the clock, to reset the clock on the 30 days?
Well, I would like him to be approved, but I'm a pragmatist, and so I would assume that, given the past votes on Mr. Williams, that would not occur, given we have the same council members, and I don't know of any changes in the interim. And it does take care of my obligation under the charter relative to the 30-day appointment.
Okay, well, I find that, I find that to be kind of abuse of this process. And I think the question was raised by a member of the public with regard to the code of the charter, requiring a different name be brought. Otherwise, we're just playing this recycle game with candidate and nominees to run a clock over or wait out an election or a turnover in some fashion. And I find that to be abusive of this process and the elected body. And I really think that it's disingenuous, to a very core level, to use this appointment process not in service of a qualified nominee to resolve the issue. We should be doing that. And you should be appointing, in my opinion, you should be nominating Mr. Archesky. But at the very least, you should be adhering to the charter, which requires a different nominee, so that we don't get in the cycle of just running a clock.
Yeah. With all due respect, thank you for your comment, Councilor Shea. It is not abusive, it is complying, compliant with the charter. City Attorney Young, do you wish to comment on that?
The charter provision says that it should be a different person from the one previously pointed, and if it is different, it is technically compliant with charter.
Previous, okay, clarification?
It should be a different nominee, not a different appointee. There's no appointee right now. You have, it's a nomination process.
Nominee, appointee, it's, okay.
So it should be a different nominee?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not a different nominee, if Mr. Williams has been brought back?
From the person who was appointed last time. In my recollection, as there was a different person last time there was an appointment made.
Oh, so as long as it's not consecutive?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so there goes the sort of disingenuousness of this, that we're really just in service of running a clock timer for your benefit of meeting the requirements, but we're not serving the point and purpose of a point of nominations and appointments to get the seat filled. And, you know, we all understand why we're not doing that, but this is just an abusive process, and whether it's technically correct is debatable, I think, but you certainly aren't serving the interests of the city or the P&amp;Z at this point. We have a pretty important petition in front of the planning and zoning right now, that has seen, over the course of two years, a name change and seven postponements, which included an inappropriate deferment to the Town Center Review Committee, which is not charged with reviewing active petitions. And that has bought yet another 90 days. It certainly looks like we're running out more than just this clock, and that is just not in the interest or the functionality of the city of Wildwood, or how it's intended to run. And anybody that does that needs to be called out on it, and the residents need to understand that. And you want to talk about, you know, why can't we all just get along or be civil? You know, civility doesn't get over stuff like this. It doesn't mean you have to be uncivil. It just means that we have to be willing to recognize the manipulation that's going on here.
Point of information, Councilor Shea, thank you for your remarks. The referral, if you look at the minutes of planning, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and this was actually specifically discussed at the last meeting of the commission, the referral of the development which you were talking about to the Town Center Committee is not inappropriate or violative of any rule or otherwise. Councilor Taylor?
Well, two points. Number one, if, I'm going to make it three points. Number one, you know, if the charter says you have to put forward someone, someone must be put forward. I was the author of the referendum which suggested that, or asked the mayor to consider appointing Mr. Archesky. So I understand that there's issues here. That said, I do believe what is happening here is mandated by the charter. Also, if there is no appointment made, Mr. Archesky stays seated. Therefore, by not taking a vote, we are keeping Mr. Archesky in place. Given, though, that there is so much controversy over whether this is abusive and it's being perfunctory, I will make a motion that we take a vote. If I find a second, we'll take a vote, but I make a motion that we take a vote.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion, take a vote, and a second, from Councilor McCutcheon. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Stein, you had your hand up. Is it relative to the motion or something different?
Not separate.
Roll call vote, please. And so, just for clarif, I'm sorry, thank you.
What are we taking a vote upon?
So this would be a vote, this would be, I believe your motion was to vote.
Yeah, to take a vote on the nomination.
So is there any objection to voting on the proposed appointment of Mr. Archesky? If there isn't an objection, we'll take a vote on that.
So the motion is to appoint Mr. Archesky?
No. The motion is to vote on the appointment of Mr. Williams that has been presented to you.
Oh, so you're proposing an amendment, your motion is to appoint Mr. Williams, is that correct?
The motion is to take a vote on the nomination of Mr. Williams, so a vote in affirmative is for a two-seat Mr. Williams.
Now I understand.
I am doing so because of concerns that the perfunctory nature of what was going on here was abusive, so I'm making a motion to take a vote.
And so, and so without objection, Councilmember Greg Noni, of any member of the council, to the motion to take a vote, then we would have a roll call vote on the proposed appointment of Mr. Williams.
Was there a second to that motion?
There was, from Councilmember McCutcheon. Is there any objection? Councilmember Stevens?
But you came here tonight just to move this through and not take a vote, is that right?
I certainly have no problem taking a vote. I hope he's approved tonight.
Okay.
Is there any objection to taking a vote on the appointment? Seeing none?
I'll object, but since you came here not to make a vote, but I don't know what an objection does.
So we'll vote, the council will vote on the motion to take a vote on the appointment of Mr. Williams. All in favor of the motion to take a vote on Mr. Williams, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Raise your hand for opposed, please. Councilmember Greg Noni, Councilmember Shea, Councilmember Dillard, and Councilmember Stevens. Motion carries. We will now take, the council will vote on the proposed appointment of Mr. Williams. A yes vote is to approve the appointment, a no vote is to not approve. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
No.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shea?
No.
Councilmember Dillard?
No.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
No.
Councilmember Jordan?
No.
Councilmember Stein?
No.
Councilmember Werther?
May.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
It's tied.
Tie vote, eight to eight. And the mayor, in this instance, is not able to break a tie. Okay, thank you. Moving to public hearings. Ms. Meyer, would you please read PZ 12-18? You know, before we do that, if I may take a point of personal privilege at the moment, Councilmember Stein, I know you've indicated to me prior to the meeting that your health this evening is not great, and we have an item on the agenda later that directly concerns you. And out of respect for you and your health, if you reach a point where you feel like you may need to leave, if you could give me a few minutes heads up, I would then ask the council to rearrange the agenda, so that that can occur prior to you needing to leave for health reasons.
Okay, thank you. I'm okay now.
All right, good. City Attorney, another housekeeping item, suggested or mentioned that I need to declare the motion that was just made failed. Thank you for that. Mr. Young? Okay. Ms. Meyer, please read PZ 12-18.
PZ 12-18, 2540 Lindy Lane, Andrew Hildebrand, 924 Forest Lake Court, Baldwin, Missouri, 63021. A request for a change in zoning from the non-urban resident district to the R-3 10,000-square-foot residence district upon a property that is 0.39 acres in size, which is located on the east side of Lindy Lane, north of Manchester Road, locator number 24V 530131, street address 2540 Lindy Lane. The subject property is designated Neighborhood Edge District under the current Town Center regulating plan. Proposed use one single-family dwelling on the existing non-conforming lot.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to PZ 12-18?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, very briefly. Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, the Planning and Zoning Commission has provided for your consideration tonight its letter of recommendation regarding the requested rezoning that Ms. Meyer just read into the record. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning. The rezoning would allow the redevelopment of the lot with a single-family dwelling and any authorized accessory uses. The rezoning will eliminate the nonconformity and is consistent with the Town Center plan. The department will be available for any questions or comments regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission's action after public comment, and after public comment, it will respectfully request for a motion to prepare the necessary legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Do you have any speaker cards, Ms. Meyer? Okay. Any question? Councilmember Stevens?
No, just to make a motion to prepare the legislation.
Okay, we have a motion to prepare the legislation requested by the department. Is there a second to the motion made by Councilmember Werther? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, moving into second readings, Bill 2450 is before the council for final passage, and it concerns Ward Five. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember McCutcheon, seconded by Councilmember Bertolino. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2450.
Bill 2450, in ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, to accept an area of excess right-of-way from the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, which is situated at the intersection of Taylor Road and State Route 100 for public use purposes by this community.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2450?
No, sir, but, Mr. Mayor, members of city council are available to answer any questions or respond to comments.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes, what is the budgetary effect nominal? What does nominal mean in this case?
We'll be maintaining the roadway regardless, and so there is a cost, but there is not an additional cost because of the transfer of right-of-way.
I see, another mo dot landmine, thank you.
I'll leave that comment unresponded to, sir.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2450.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shea?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving to Bill 2451. It is before the council for final passage, and it concerns Ward Seven. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Stein, seconded by Councilmember Werther. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2451.
Bill 2451, in ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, granting approval of a replacement deposit agreement for the Old State Place subdivision, plat book 363, page 191 to 192, an eight-lot residential development located upon an approximately six-acre tract of land that is contained in Section 7, Township 44 North, Range 4 East, City of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more specifically situated on the north side of the Old State Road west of Ridge Road for the purposes of allowing the developer additional time to complete required improvements associated with the project.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2451?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, but again, the department's available for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Joe? Seeing none, Ms. Meyer, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2451.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving to Bill 2452, before the council final passage, and it concerns Ward 6. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Councilmember Boe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2452.
Bill 2452, in ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the division of 80-acre tract of land addressed as 4452 Fox Creek Road, locator number 27Y 240023, which is located in the south half of the northeast quarter of Section 29, Township 44 North, Range 3 East, City of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more specifically situated on the east side of the Fox Creek Road south of State Route 100 for the purposes of subdividing it into two parcels of ground hereafter to be known as lots 1 and 2 of Circle G Ranch, with the sizes of the resultant properties being 70.363 acres and 10.145 acres in area.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2452?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, briefly. When the bill was introduced two weeks ago, there was a discussion relating to a fence that bordered Fox Creek Road. The type of fence was creating some issues for deer that were trying to jump it. The city council requested that the department contact the owner of property and see if that fence could be modified or removed. I'm glad to report that the owners have removed the fence, and they intend to replace it with one that's more friendly toward their equestrian interest.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further questions or any questions for Joe or comments on the bill? Councilmember Jordan?
I would just like to publicly thank you for responding and effecting change with that fence as quickly as you did on behalf of Ward 6. We're happy that deer will no longer be getting harpooned on it. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the compliment. Terry Gaston and I worked on it, but the owners had already had it in the works, so it was a simple request in this case, and I'll make sure they know you appreciate it.
Why don't we send them a thank-you letter as well?
I'd be glad to do that.
All right. Councilmember Werther?
Thank you. Mr. Villas, just for a refresher for council members as well as the audience, when we have lot splits like this, the question always comes up, how many more lot splits can occur before it goes through a typical planning and zoning, public hearing, and reporting and so forth? Can you speak to that in this particular instance, since we started off with an 80-acre lot roughly, and now we're down to a 10-acre and a 70-acre lot?
The property owners could split one more time, creating four lots, let's say. After four lots, the collective would make it a major subdivision, and then all the other regulations of the city would be applied.
Any further questions for Joe? Seeing none, Ms. Meyer, call the roll for final passage of Bill 2452.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
[laughing]
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving to Bill 2454, the final bill for second reading before the council, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Manton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2454.
Bill 2454, in ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, providing for the compensation of the offices of municipal judge, prosecuting attorney, city treasurer, and city marshal.
Thank you. Councilmember Garitano, as Chair of Admin Public-- the Administration Public Works Committee, do you want to say anything relative to Bill 2454?
The comments are the same as I said the last time.
Okay. Any questions for Councilmember Garitano, as Chair, or anyone else? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2454.
Councilmember Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
[inaudible]
Councilmember Jordan?
[inaudible]
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Moving into first readings, Bill 2456 is before the council, and it concerns all wards as well. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember McGowan, seconded by Councilmember Dodwell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2456.
Bill 2456, in ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing changes to the regulations that govern certain types of signs by amending Chapter 145.140, sign regulations for all C and M districts, Section B 8, by adding new language to it along with deleting Chapter 415.440, temporary signs, Section F, and replacing such with a new Section F and adding a new Section G to be effective in multiple zoning district designations of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, which will allow current application inconsistencies and improve the enforcement of the same, all being consistent with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission in its report dated March 4, 2019.
Joe, anything you wanted to mention relative to Bill 2456?
This matter was presented at public hearing two weeks ago. At the conclusion of the hearing, city council authorized the preparation of legislation. The city attorney and the Department of Planning would respectfully request the city council consider a second reading of this bill tonight.
Thank you. Before we get to that, do we have any questions for Joe? Councilmember Dillard?
I actually have questions for the city attorney.
Okay.
So, in looking at the revised ordinance, and I won't read it all just for sake of brevity, but it says, "Nothing contained herein shall be interpreted as prohibiting any person from stopping on any sidewalk or other public place to communicate," parenthetically, "verbally, by gesture, or in writing, including any writing on a sign," in parentheses. "Talk or to make a speech, provided that such person shall not loiter, loaf, wander, stand, or remain idle, either alone or in concert with others, in a public place in such a manner as to obstruct any public street, public highway, or public sidewalk for traffic or pedestrians." So, I have a couple of questions. Unions seem to do this all of the time, often when they're protesting a business or unfair labor practices that they're alleging or something like that. They stand in concert with each other with signs. Other civic groups, one that comes to mind is like the pro-lifers, the chain of life. They often take, you know, a Sunday or Saturday and link arms on a public sidewalk. What about those people? And then I think my second question, at least my second question, if not more, we're saying that we are not going to prohibit-- talking or to make a speech is not prohibited in any way, shape, or form. However, the person talking or making a speech can't loiter, loaf, wander, stand, or remain idle, either alone or in concert with others. So, I guess I would ask, what does that look like? Somebody making a speech but not standing idle with others?
And I'm pulling up the language now because there's a qualifier to that provision. So, just a moment. And the qualifier to that provision is "in such a manner as to obstruct any public street, public highway, or public sidewalk, or any other public place or building by hindering or impeding the free and uninterrupted passage of vehicles or pedestrians." So, to the extent that they loiter, loaf, or stand in conjunction on a public place that would inhibit the free and uninterrupted passage of pedestrians or vehicles, that is where the problem would arise.
Okay, so I thought that's what you were going to say, so here's my next question. Then is the violation-- what's the right way to put this? Is the violation prospective or is it actually in practice? In other words, you have, say, 10 people gathered on a sidewalk or around a sidewalk on public property, a public right-of-way, listening to a speech. If somebody then comes along on a bicycle or walking or something like that, and the group is such that they immediately allow the passage, sorry, are we going to look at that and say they are not in violation, or is the very nature of them gathering as a group prospectively prohibiting the through traffic?
No, the nature of them gathering as a group is not what is intended here. It's the actual impeding of the traffic.
The actual impeding of the traffic?
Which is what this ordinance is intended to prohibit in terms of that specific language.
Okay, I just want to make that absolutely clear and ask if we don't need to clarify that, because we say, you know, "in such a manner as to obstruct any public street, public highway, or public sidewalk," or any other-- that could be left to interpretation.
It's consistent with language that has been upheld elsewhere, specifically identifying the issue of actually impeding, and that's how my recommendation will be to enforce it.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe you had another question before we got to that one. What was your first question?
They were the same thing. I mean, it's-- he answered both. By the unions, it's not impeding, actually.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Dillard for his questions. They're quite insightful. I think we have to be careful that we write this properly so we don't violate people's free speech, and I think the concern has been fairly addressed. What I like about this is it does give a carve-out for political, personal speech. I mean, I think the intent was to prohibit corporate speech, you know, or abuse of those areas by the living sign, and that's a whole other kettle of fish, as they say. But this is at least moving very much in the right direction where it gives that carve-out for political expression. And I think Mr. Dillard's query was right on the money, and I appreciate the attorney's response. So, I will be voting in the affirmative, because I shall not allow the perfect to be the enemy of the good.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Thank you. So, I guess my first question would be for City Attorney Young, that you said this language has been supported in courts or other areas? Nope, it's on, I'm just not close enough, sorry. So, however you wanted, how exactly did you answer?
Well, the answer of the reason we're using the language, that the idea is that the language of the ordinance is focused at the impeding of the traffic on sidewalks and other public places, and that has been supported as a reasonable time, place, and manner restriction by courts.
Okay. The language we have in place now has also been supported by courts, correct?
The specific language that we have in--
The ordinance today?
Today?
As it sits?
I'm not aware of that.
We have been led to believe that that has-- that that is not in violation of anybody's rights or any court or anything.
If you want to get into specific discussions of the legality or constitutionality of the existing language, I'd invite a closed session to discuss that in more detail.
I don't need to go into that. I'm just, I think we, as a city and as a council, are under the impression that the ordinances that we have in place are legal.
There's no court that has made them illegal, to my knowledge.
Okay. So, this is where my problem is with this, is I don't think we should carve out a specific area, so to speak, for political speech. We have-- I said this before, and if this was a business that was coming to the city claiming that their constitutional rights to free speech were being violated, I don't think we would be changing our ordinances. We would be saying that our ordinances are fair and legal, and I am not going to support this just because of other circumstances that have led to this.
Thank you. So, see, Councilmember Dillard?
Sorry, I actually have one more question here, and I hate to be, you know, splitting hairs or something, but this is a very important topic. We're talking about a carve-out for political speech.
No, there is no carve-out for political speech.
Okay, so, right, because what-- and I agree with everything that Councilmember Bartoni just said. The language that we're adding here does not actually specify that it's political speech. So, in the first-- and I'm looking specifically at, sorry, 415A, no, I'm sorry, B8. Living signs of any kind used as advertising devices for commercial businesses, organizations, or other entities are prohibited. Then the next sentence is what we're adding. "Nothing contained herein shall be interpreted as prohibiting any person from stopping on any sidewalk or other public place to communicate." So, for instance, and I'm going to just demonstrate absurdity by being absurd, if I go down to a sidewalk and start giving a speech on the-- how I think it is in the best public health to eat at Letty Lou's versus Sunny Street Cafe, and I'm holding a Letty Lou's sign, is that prohibited or not under this?
The language does prohibit commercial businesses, organizations, living signs of those businesses. If you were standing there just simply speaking of the benefits and not blocking traffic, you'd be fine.
Well, I guess, I mean, I guess that's where I get confused, because by virtue of holding a sign that says, "Drink Coca-Cola, not Pepsi," or "Eat at Letty Lou's, not Sunny Street Cafe," would I have to be making a speech in that regard in order to be protected under this? Or if I'm just holding a sign, is that protected speech?
The proposed language does make the distinction between a living sign and simply speaking just by its language and its nature, because living signs used as advertising services for commercial businesses, organizations, or other entities are prohibited. So, we are making a distinction between commercial speech and other types of speech, and that is permitted.
But we're not making the-- I mean, I don't read the-- I don't read the legislation as making a distinction between commercial speech and political speech. It just says, "Nothing contained herein shall be interpreted as prohibiting any person from stopping on a sidewalk or other place to communicate, verbally, by gesture, or in writing, including any writing on a sign, talk or to make a speech." It doesn't say anything about politics.
No, and I'm not saying that it does make a political exception, but it makes a distinction between commercial and non-commercial, just by reading the first sentence in conjunction with the second.
I just, I disagree with that, but I mean, I don't see the distinction. I disagree with that, but I mean, I don't see the distinction.
Do you want to read the first two sentences for the benefit of the audience, City Attorney Young?
Well, the first sentence says, "Living signs of any kind used as advertising devices for commercial businesses, organizations, or other entities are prohibited."
Then the next phrase, "Nothing contained herein," "Nothing contained herein shall be interpreted as prohibiting any person", and then going on and further defining the speech that we're talking about.
Right.
But, I mean, so, "Nothing contained herein shall be interpreted." Nothing contained herein includes that first sentence.
But you have to read it in conjunction with the first sentence, otherwise the first sentence is superfluous, and the courts will not interpret a language in an ordinance to be superfluous.
"Nothing contained herein shall be interpreted." That includes the language in the first sentence. This is not difficult. I mean, I don't mean to be petulant about it, but this is an important point.
Okay, Councilor Taylor?
Okay. What I like about it is it's moving in the right direction. This, okay, we have the United States Constitution. Everything has to be, has to jibe with that. Plus, we have prosecutorial discretion. So I guess what we have here now is an attempt, I mean, I would suggest that most citizens, seeing a sidewalk, public area, hold a sign, they would feel that they are protected under Constitution. We are, I think, trying to recognize that we're giving direction to our prosecutors, we're giving direction to our code enforcers, saying, we want to give that space. Now, whether someone promoting the benefits of eating a particular type of sandwiches are given that opportunity as well, to me, it's tertiary. To the main thing that it brought us here is that we want to make sure, we want to make sure that citizens and residents feel that they can hold a sign, wear a shirt, or gather in groups to discuss whatever, the freedom of assembly. I think this moves us in that direction. The commercial concerns, I think, are a valid one. And, I mean, the Supreme Court, I disagree with it, has said that money is speech, right? So, I mean, there may come a time where we have to revisit the sandwich scenario. But again, I think what I am going to vote in favor of and supporting is a vote of confidence in instructing our prosecutors and our code enforcers that citizens hoping to engage in speech about whatever they wish to is not going to be a violation of an ordinance. Again, I have to say, you know, these issues I think are valid ones. But tonight, if I don't vote for this, that, the ability of people to hold a sign and stand on a sidewalk or in a right-of-way is in question. And that is what has brought us here to this point. And I'd like to take that issue and that issue off the table. And so I'm going to vote in the affirmative.
Councilor Shea?
Okay, so, on the issue of commercial--
You know, that, I'm sorry. City Attorney made a point, just, Councilor Shea, just one second, please. The City Attorney made a point that I failed to note, where actually, we've only had one reading, and debate cannot occur until after a second reading. So, thank you, for the City Attorney for making that point. So at this juncture, given the discussion, Councilor Shea, you're on the list. So if the motion passes, we will then call on you. Is there a motion for second, if it's made in second?
I have a question. I thought we were entertaining questions on the first reading.
Okay, what is your question?
Okay. Did the prosecuting attorney for the city of Wildwood not understand the existing language when an attempt to issue a warrant for someone holding a political sign on a sidewalk was denied?
You would have to ask the prosecuting attorney that question.
Ms. Shea? It was my understanding the prosecuting attorney did not, did not support the issuance of a warrant regarding the matter. And that's why it was not brought forth.
Yeah. I think there's a fair assumption to be made there that the understanding of the ordinance was taken into consideration, I'm sure, when that request crossed her desk. I have a question also about commercial versus temporary. To use Mr. Dillard's example of an individual, not a member, not hired by or owning a business, stands on a sidewalk with a sign that I guess could be interpreted as commercial if you're advocating for one business over another. Is that, could that not also be considered a temporary sign? I mean, if you're not hired by the business, and you don't work for them, you're just advocating your opinion, is that also not considered a temporary sign?
Are you asking if that example would fall under the other provision?
Yes, I'm trying to figure out under, what distinction is being used to determine a commercial sign, a living sign, versus a temporary sign?
The temporary sign is very clear that it only applies in the situation where the sign is affixed to a, some medium of permanence.
Okay, but both of them are, both of those provisions speak to the ability to stand on a sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay, so, you can stand on a sidewalk with either one? You can stand on a sidewalk as long as you're not interrupting passage of vehicles or pedestrians?
As long as you are holding it and not affixed to some medium of permanence, yes.
In a public place?
Correct.
Under both provisions?
Correct.
Okay. So how does the clarification of either of these provide direction for a prosecutor, or a code enforcement to know which one to use?
One has to do with living signs, and the other has to do with actually affixing a sign to something.
Okay, okay, so if I'm not affixing a sign under Section 1, 415, 440, and under G, it specifically says, "As long as you're not obstructing or hindering traffic, and you're not affixing anything, you're free to be on the sidewalk?"
Correct.
Okay. Under the living sign, what I'm asking is, under what section would somebody be enforcing a sign under his scenario, where I'm advocating Coke versus Pepsi, but I'm not hired by Coke or Pepsi, I'm not an employee? Is it a commercial, living sign? Or is it just a temporary sign unaffixed?
If it's not affixed to something on public property, the analysis would be under the prior, the one about living signs.
Okay.
I don't know if this will assist, but again, with regards to living signs, that is specific to all commercial and industrial districts, whereas temporary signs cover the gambit of all zoning districts, including residential.
Councilmember McGowan, I had you on the list. Is your, do you have a question? Or do you want to wait till after a second reading if that occurs? Okay, thank you. All right. So at this point, is there a motion for a second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Stein. Any discussion on the motion? This will take a two-thirds vote. We'll do a voice vote and see what happens before we go to roll call if we need to. All in favor of the motion for second reading of Bill 2456, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dillard?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
No.
Councilmember Boe? Councilmember Jordan? Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Councilmember Gregg Noni?
No.
Councilmember McGowan?
No.
Councilmember Bartoni?
No.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shea?
Ales, I believe, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, this will be on the agenda for the next council meeting. Moving to Bill 2457, it is before the council for first reading, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Garitano. Seconded by Councilmember Werther. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2457.
Bill 2457, an ordinance by the City Council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, to execute any and all necessary agreements for the acceptance of the LiveScan fingerprint workstation for the Wildwood precinct of the St. Louis County Police Department, which will then become part of the community's annual service contract with same.
Thank you. Is that you, Joe, or, okay, Joe? Anything you want to mention relative to Bill 2457?
Mr. Mayor, just very quickly. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the Board of Public Safety was asked to consider this particular request. The Board of Public Safety voted unanimously in support of it. Mr. Bertolino is the council liaison to the Board of Public Safety and may have something to add. I would note that under the agreement with the Missouri State Highway Patrol, the first year of use of the LiveScan fingerprint workstation is free.
Excellent. When's our next court night, Joe?
I think Wednesday, actually.
Okay. Given that, would you be interested in having a second reading of this bill?
This is the LiveScan fingerprint station. The metal detectors and wands have been ordered and will be delivered, hopefully.
So no need?
No need.
Okay. Any questions for Joe? Seeing none, it will be on the agenda for the next council meeting. Moving to Bill 2458, it is before the council for first reading. It also concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Bartoni. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2458.
Bill 2458, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the co-interim city administrators to negotiate for the purchase of a modular vehicle barrier system and associated trailer for the deployment purposes from Advanced Security Technologies LLC.
Jody, have anything you'd like to mention relative to this item?
Again, Mr. Mayor, very briefly. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this matter too was presented to the Board of Public Safety. The modular vehicle barrier system has been in place for a single year. The initial allotment found to be successful. The St. Louis County Police Department requested additional barriers, along with a trailer capable of deploying them in an easy and safe fashion.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe? Councilmember Gregg Noni?
This is the same system that we got, the Israeli system, that has the barrier that stops the vehicle in motion, is like they purchased before, is that correct?
Identical, sir.
Okay, that's fine, then.
Councilor McGowan?
So Joe, are we talking about purchasing more of the same?
Yes, sir.
Both the barriers and then the, a trailer to move them around, is that right?
Actually, the original purchase of the barriers did not include a trailer. The police were using their ATV, which was not the best-case scenario. The trailer accommodates it because it's built by the same company. And it'll make it safer, quicker, and less cumbersome. Yes, sir, 24 more.
Councilor Taylor?
Yeah, I just--
I'm sorry, Councilmember Stein?
So Joe, would these barriers help us to prevent the types of occurrences like we had at the Barbecue Bash last year?
That was referenced in the captain's memorandum on this, in that although the barriers were deployed, but there was not enough of them to address all the critical points in the traffic pattern.
Okay, and I totally support that. I think that we need to protect our officers and also pedestrians. Would the Prop. P funds be used for this?
Yes, that was a question the Board of Public Safety raised during the presentation by the Department of Public Works and the Department of Planning. And there is a substantial reserve amount. And we do collect approximately $1.8 million per year. A majority of that money is used as part of the annual contract. But I can assure you there is money available for this purchase.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes, so, basically, protect officers and standards by vehicular injury. Do you envision any other potential uses?
The primary purpose is to stop a vehicle from going into a crowd, whether intentional or non-intentional.
Okay, so we could use, all right, so, all right. Just want to make sure if there was any other uses envisioned, so. I can be, yeah, I support.
Thank you.
I do not know of any, but certainly if--
Well, for example, we're not going to establish free speech regions.
That is not the intent.
All right, thank you, I can support.
Even with the trailer, they're still heavy and cumbersome to move, but we're trying to make it as easy as possible.
Thank you. Councilmember Gregg Noni?
Yeah, quick comment. We saw a demonstration of these. I was on the public safety board when they ordered the first batch of these. It's very impressive. A full-size van will stop dead in its tracks by one of these things.
Thank you. Okay, the bill will be on the council's next agenda.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, the City Attorney has advised that with respect to the action the council took relative to Bill 2456, that there is a very important matter that he needs to apprise the council of. And he can only do that in closed session. It would take probably two to three minutes. I would ask for a motion to go into closed session to discuss that. Made by Councilmember Dodwell?
Do we already have a closed session for the work session? Can we handle it then?
And that is, we do, and that's a different meeting. This is a council meeting, not the work session.
Okay, but can we handle the, both?
No, unfortunately, we cannot. Separate meetings. Just like you had to make the motion on the--
I understand what you said.
Okay. Good. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Councilmember Manton. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Bertolino?
Yeah, since this is a first reading of this, why go into a session tonight? We've got--
He will explain, he has to explain that only in closed session.
Well, can we schedule the closed session? Well, okay, never mind.
Councilmember Gregg Noni?
Yeah, because we have people in the gallery, is there any possibility we could finish this business that we have before us before we close out the regular session and then go into closed session?
If that is the wish of the council, I don't think the City Attorney would have any objection to that, would you?
No.
And I don't have any objection. Is there, is that acceptable, the council do it at the end of the meeting? Okay.
Can I just ask a point of, I mean, since we're doing the closed sessions in two separate things, would we have to do that, come back out here, go back into closed session?
Those would be two separate things.
Okay, all right.
So the motion will be on the floor when we get to it. Thank you for the suggestion, Councilmember Gregg Noni. Moving next, I believe, to Bill 2459. Is that what we, 2459? It is before the council for first reading? Thank you. And concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Bertolino. Seconded by Councilmember McCutcheon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2457. 2459, sorry, my apologies.
Bill 2459, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, hereby changing the name of a section of Etherington Road located between State Route 109 and the extension of Taylor Road to be hereafter named and known as Taylor Road.
And for information, I believe I may have misspoken, mentioned this concerns all wards, it actually concerns Ward 5 only. Rick, anything you would like to say relative to Bill 2459?
Just briefly, Mayor, just for clarity's sake, I did put up the drawing showing the proposed renaming of Etherington Road. The section that's in question to be renamed is in blue. It is the existing road that is just beyond the newly constructed portion of roadway within the village at Brightleaf. And with that, I'm available for any questions or comments.
Any questions for Rick? All right, seeing none, it will be on the agenda for the next council meeting. Moving to Bill 2460, it's before the council. First reading, it concerns Wards 1 and 3. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember McGowan, seconded by Councilmember Gregg Noni. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2460.
Bill 2460, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, to execute a supplemental agreement on behalf of the city of Wildwood with Juno Associates for the additional design services required for the Etherington Road Bridge Replacement Project over Bonham Creek within the city of Wildwood.
Thank you. Rick, anything you'd like to mention relative to this bill?
Yes, briefly, Mayor, council members. This bill will authorize a supplemental agreement with our consultant, Juno Associates, to complete additional engineering work on our project. The work is necessary so that we can evaluate proposed improvements that would be constructed with the project that would impact and place fill in the floodway of Bonham Creek. So it's necessary because the floodway is regulated with our floodway ordinances. So our engineer has to review the placement, complete a hydraulic analysis to determine that there is a no-rise condition, essentially that the fill does not increase the chance of flooding in the creek when it's placed. So that's the purpose of the bill. It is relative to the acquisition of easements on the property, and we are up against a May 15 deadline to get that done. So respectfully, I would request a double reading of this bill tonight if we can do it.
Thank you. Councilor Shea? Is your microphone on there?
So move for a second reading?
All right, is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Councilmember Gregg Noni. Any discussion on the motion for second reading? It will take a two-thirds vote. We'll do it by voice vote, and see, Councilmember McGowan.
Just a quick question. Rick, do you have everything essentially done at this point in terms of the engineering and so forth? Or is there still, the reason I'm asking was that Mr. Irving, he stepped up here at the break and was asking some questions. It sounded like, at least from his standpoint, there may be more, more left to be worked out.
There are some details relative to, with Mr. Irving's property, There are some details relative to, with Mr. Irving's property, he's requesting a berm to be constructed. There are some details that still need to be ironed out relative to the exact size of the berm and the location of it. But once we have that ironed out, then we would complete the hydraulic study that we hope would show a no-rise condition with Bonham Creek.
So, we can go ahead this evening and approve this on a second reading? And you'll still get those additional things taken care of, is that right?
Yes, that's my, that's my expectation, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question. All in favor of second reading, the motion for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2460.
Bill 2460, in ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Wildwood, Missouri to execute a supplemental agreement on behalf of the city of Wildwood with Juno Associates for additional design services required for the Etherington Road Bridge replacement project over Bonham Creek within the city of Wildwood.
Thank you. Rick, anything further?
No, sir, but I'm available for further questions or comments.
Okay. Seeing no questions or comments, Ms. Meyer, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2460.
Councilmember Doddwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manten?
Yes.
Councilmember Shea?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Bill passes. Moving into resolutions, Resolution 2019-16 is before the council and concerns all wards. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-16? Made by Councilmember Garitano, seconded by Councilmember McCutcheon. Ms. Meyer, please read the resolution.
Resolution 2019-16, a resolution by the City Council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor of the city of Wildwood, Missouri to execute a contract with Pattern Ives for the development of preliminary specifications and reconstruction plans of the Esten log cabin, thereby allowing the bidding process to proceed with a defined set of parameters for this effort.
Thank you. Joe, anything further you'd like to mention? I know we discussed this in work session, anything else you want to say about?
No, sir, unless there are questions or comments, the department's report, pardon me, the Historic Preservation Commission's report provides the detail.
Okay. Councilor Greg Noni?
Yeah, a quick question, did you say they finally decided on the location or not?
Well, we've narrowed it down to three locations. That elephant in the room needs to be addressed now.
Well, you got a meeting Thursday night, right?
Yes, sir.
Tell them to kill the elephant.
Alright.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 2019-16, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to Resolution 2019-17 is before the council and it concerns all wards as well. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-17? Made by Councilman Manten, seconded by Councilmember Garitano. Ms. Meyer, please read the resolution.
Resolution 2019-17, a resolution by the City Council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri endorsing and thereby authorizing the Department of Administration to add a part-time temporary project manager for the Department of Public Works per the direction and recommendation of the Administration and Public Works Committee of the City Council, which occurred at its meeting on March 5, 2019.
Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to this resolution?
The Department of Planning and Parks and I, as the co-interim city administrator, are advocating this as I sit on the opposite side of the building and watch five major projects launch in 2019 by the Department of Public Works. As noted, any of those five projects is enough work for the existing staff, and they are pressed for time, and we do have timelines associated with some of the grants, so the department and, I believe, Mr. Cross and I are endorsing this along with the Administration and Public Works Committee of City Council.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Greg Noni?
Yep, maybe, maybe not so simple a question, but salary status on this, has that been determined already?
Yes, it's not to exceed $33,000 from now until the end of the year. That amount is less than the budgeted maintenance worker that has not been engaged and will not be engaged in 2019.
Are there any other benefits to be accrued by the employee?
None that I am aware of, because again, it is a part-time position intended to be temporary.
Thank you.
Councilor McCutcheon?
So, this is temporary to how long? What's the timeframe?
Again, depending on the length of projects, we are funding through the end of the year, 2019. As we get closer to the budget process and the end of the fiscal year, we may ask again for endorsement or additional funding, because again, the projects may extend beyond the nine months we have remaining in 2019.
So, given the workload, wouldn't it make sense to have this a permanent part-time position?
We're not quite there yet. Again, after these five projects move through the process, we'll take an evaluation, but we certainly appreciate the sentiment.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 2019-17, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Resolution carries. Thank you, Joe. Moving into miscellaneous, the first item is approval of expenditures. Any questions? Councilor Greg Noni?
Yeah, I hate to do this again, Mr. Brown, there's an amount on here, he knows what I'm going to say. It's $23,600 and some odd dollars. I'm assuming that that's the amount that we paid MoDOT to put our name on a sign at Highway 44 and 109, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Why is it $23,600? I know we voted on this, but you know, this is crazy. We're putting our name on a sign, a highway sign, it's a wayfinding sign? Why did it cost that much money?
That is the terms of the agreement, the price that MoDOT quoted to fabricate and install the signs. There's a total of six signs, I believe, there's three each direction, you know, three eastbound and three westbound.
Isn't it part of their responsibility to maintain highway wayfinding signs? I mean, isn't that what they do?
They certainly do maintain the interstate system. In this case, essentially, we asked for them to change the signs that were in place and from their perspective-
Oh, we made a mistake of asking them, I see.
From their perspective, yeah.
Is, is, are we responsible for any maintenance on this thing now, or is this their baby?
No, we will not be obligated to maintain them.
Oh, that's a great break, thank you.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the expenditures, made by Councilman Manten, seconded by Councilmember Doddwell. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Joe, receipt and file, item B, you want to speak to that at all on Bordeaux states?
The Planning and Zoning Commission was asked to consider a replacement for the Town Center Streetlight Luminaire with a more suburban type. Planning and Zoning Commission did not support said change. The report is being forwarded to City Council for receipt and filings, and I'm available for any questions or comments.
Okay, seeing none, thank you. Next under miscellaneous is the privacy policy, use of residents' email addresses provided to the city. So, you've been provided with a background email in response to a question from Councilman McCutcheon that Mr. Cross wrote relative to a council member using our email list that this was for our newsletter that residents and others had subscribed to without knowing it was for anything other than that. And so, my question is, I believe this is going to be discussed by Admin Public Works, is that correct? It's on the agenda, I believe, of developing a policy as to going forward?
We can, we can add that to the-
I think it's on the, I think-
Social media policy.
Oh, yes, then that is correct.
Okay, so my question for the council is, does the council want to make any sort of position relative to the use or lack thereof in the interim between now and the time Admin Public Works does something with this? Councilor Taylor?
Well, my concern is, I mean, we definitely need a policy. My concern is, is we're prevented, for example, from taking a position legally, using city resources on ballot initiatives. I think we need to be clear that, I'm not certain of all the legality surrounding it, but I, I would be very cautious in using emails that are collected for city business pertaining to merger stuff, so I don't know if we need to make an official recommendation or official motion, but I am concerned in reading, and I don't know how accurate everything in the background information was, but the communications were regarding, kind of touched, I mean, it touched on, it was tangential to a ballot initiative, and, and I think we got to be careful. Otherwise, I think, you know, we, we could place ourselves in some jeopardy. So, also, I would like to inquire of the attorney, because I don't know the answer to this question, I'm not sure if you do as well. I mean, on a federal level, and I know we're not on the federal level, this, this would have been patently illegal to use any city or government-generated contacts for the purpose of a, of an election or something touches part of ballot initiative. Is there any applicable state laws regarding this that we need to take direct action on tonight about? That's my concern.
No, sir.
Okay. I still maintain that I am concerned about this ballot initiative, and we need to be careful in that, but given that there is no applicable state laws, it doesn't seem as urgent, so I'm not going to make a motion to form a policy, but I think it would probably be better to let Admin and Public Works work through it.
Councilor Shea?
So, just to be clear, because we talked about, at Admin, as we talked about the recommendations that we forwarded for the committee, the ad hoc committee for the merger, I sought clarification on the rules for advocacy versus spending. And I was, believe, and I won't speak for Mr. Young, but it was pretty clear that we can take a position, we just can't spend any money on it. And no money was expended on this, this, and I, and I don't recall the exact wording of the email that went out, I do recall seeing it, but it was from a point of information and education, and we are certainly within our rights to do that. I don't feel like it was a misuse or treaded into the territory of possibly violating the concerns that have been expressed here, because I was pretty clear in my question at Admin, and we got a pretty clear answer. We can take a position, we just can't spend any money on it. Want to add anything to that, Mr. Young?
Yeah, the law does expressly prevent an officer from making an expenditure of city funds now, and that's in support or opposition to a ballot proposition. Now, use of a city email to expressly oppose or support a ballot proposition, the Missouri Ethics Commission says that is problematic under that statute, but you are correct in saying that doesn't prohibit the city from providing information.
In your opinion? Did the email provide information?
I've not analyzed it in that fashion.
Okay, so we're, okay, so that's kind of a problem, because we're being now presented with this as it's-
So, Councilor Shea, it's presented not, not because-
Mr. Boland, please just let me finish my thought.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay? We are being asked to consider this in the context of it being a problem from a legal standpoint, and our attorney is telling us he hasn't reviewed the email. I think that's, that's a huge gap in information. If we're being, we're, we put this on the agenda for our consideration, we've had expressions of concern about its appropriateness, but we're, we're going to rely on a legal opinion that hasn't reviewed the email. I find that problematic. Why is this on the agenda? Obviously, it wasn't an issue enough for you to review it, maybe it isn't an issue, maybe it is, but we're being asked to consider this, and I suppose somebody's going to make a motion to take some action or do something about it, but if we can't determine whether or not it was for information or for advocacy or treading too close to the MEC guidelines on something like this, what are we analyzing?
So, Councilor Shea, I was attempting to make a point of information exactly to that. There's nothing in the material you received that says this is a legal issue. The reason it's on the agenda principally in my mind, and the reason I placed it on the agenda, has nothing to do with the content of the email. It has to do with the fact that our residents subscribed to our newsletter, understanding that that's all they were going to have their emails used for, when in fact, they got something different and it misrepresented it to the contrary. So, it's not a legal issue, it is a policy issue as to the use of our residents' email. And my question is whether the council wants to make any kind of a motion or decision rather in regard to that between now and the time Admin Public Works considers.
Response, please, because Mr. Taylor has raised the issue of the content, and we had plenty of time to consider that, fair enough, but when I raise the content issue, it's not appropriate.
I didn't say it wasn't appropriate, I'm just making point of clarification.
Make it one use.
Councilmember Bertolino?
You make the point.
I'm sorry.
No, you got it.
Okay. Councilmember Taylor, did I see your hand again?
Yeah, just, just to be clear, I was not, I was very explicit in stating that if there were not things seen as legal issues, I think we should defer to public, you know, to, to-
To public-
Right, right, Admin and Public Works. That, that was actually my statement. I do have concerns policy-wise and, and extreme concerns. I don't, I don't think we need to be, I think it treads close to the MEC line, if not over it, that would take analysis, but I did not, I mean, the fact that people signed up for a city email and are receiving this type of thing, I do believe needs to be addressed, but there are two distinct issues. One, legal, I inquired, it was dismissed, and I said that I would not be making a motion, not be making a motion to further entertain tonight. If there were legal questions, I would be inclined to do so, seek a second. Regarding the policy, I have strong concerns regarding this, but I don't think it needs to be addressed tonight, so as a point of clarification, that was my intent, and that is what I said.
Councilor McCutcheon?
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilmember Taylor. I think if this was on another level, we would be penalized and, and maybe even greater than just financially penalized, but beyond all of that, you know, our citizens trust that we will keep their personal information private. They signed up for a newsletter, that was on a newsletter list, they did not give the city permission to use it to send them comments or suggestions or, you know, support this. I mean, that, that is political question, that's political support, because it's a political issue. Again, I have a real hard time with this, because we used emails that we weren't given permission to use for a different subject. I think we need a policy, but I also think we need to have a temporary policy before we get to formal policy, before we all get into trouble.
Do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we have a temporary policy that we will not use the city emails that were purported for the e-newsletter or any other reason.
Sir, second to the motion, seconded by Councilmember Bartoni. So, that's the motion on the floor. Councilmember Werther, I had you on the list, you want to speak to the motion or is it something different?
It's redundant.
Councilman Doddwell, I had you on the list, do you want to speak to the motion?
Nothing motion, I have a motion.
Okay, we'll keep you on the list. Councilman Bartoni?
Yes, thank you. So, a little while ago, or a little while back, a few months or a year, we were, we didn't have a policy on background checks, and it was important that we had a policy on background checks, and at that time, I tried to get all background checks stopped until we had a policy. I didn't get a lot of love for that, but I think that this is a similar but different situation, that we should have a, we do not use these until we have a policy in place. So, I don't think we should be using any of our residents' email addresses for any other purposes except what they're intended for until our Admin and Public Works comes up with a policy for everybody here.
Okay, any further discussion?
That's why I'm seconding, and I'll support that.
Councilor Stein?
Yeah, Councilor Stein? I think in principle, I support this, however, how are we going to determine who, where people got these addresses? You know, I mean, apparently, the, the former city administrator was, was handing out these lists. We get a list monthly from Julian on new residents, is it monthly? Yeah. And so, I, if, if the policy is, it goes into effect and we kind of govern forward, I'm fine with that. If it's, if it's, okay, well, now that we've got this policy, everybody needs to go through and scrub their, their, you know, mailing list, because, I mean, folks that have been on the council for a long time, or off and on, maintain those lists. It's, it's one of the, the, well, one of the perks, but it's also, if you're, if you're a smart-
It's one of the, well, one of the perks, but it's also, if you're a smart public official, you keep track of folks in your district so that you can communicate to them. So I would prefer that this goes to Admin Public Works. I think this right now is just unenforceable. So I'll, I'll support it, just because I agree with the principle, but I think it's misguided.
Counselor Stevens?
My own email is on that list. Am I allowed to use my own email? Under this ordinance, under this temporary... City Attorney?
Without giving a practical answer, I think the answer would be yes, because you've received it in a different format and under different circumstances.
So is it, was it illegal at all to give out the public information from city administrator Ryan Thomas? It's public information, right?
Correct.
Okay. Is it illegal at all for politicians to send unsolicited emails?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. So people signed up to get information from the city, I sent them information from the city. So, you know. I got a great response from that email, by the way, you know? I got a really good response from it. So, you know, I've had those email addresses for months and months and months. I didn't use them, I didn't use them to say, "Vote for Niles" or anything like that. All right? I just was holding on to them. I didn't know how I was going to use them, waiting for an issue to come up, and here's an issue, the merger. Everybody's opposed to the merger, right? And so I sent out an issue or an email using the list that I got legally, sending the email legally, and the first response from the city is to stop, you know, to stop the merger talk, you know? I just, or before the merger, against the merger, you don't want me to speak about the merger, you don't want me to use legally methods to speak about the merger. Just, I don't know. I don't see it's necessary, but vote how you will. Thank you.
So I can't speak for the council, obviously. My only concern with it, Counselor Stevens, was that the email stated to the recipients that they received it because they had subscribed to something you had sent them, when in fact, that was not the case.
That doesn't have anything to do with the legality of the email or anything?
Agreed.
I did offer an unsubscribe button, and I had like 1% unsubscribe out of the vast number of emails that I sent. It's a very small number, you know, as far as spammers go. If anybody's worried that I'm spamming people, it's a very small number that bounced back or that, you know, unsubscribed. And also, I got, like I said, I got a very good response from a lot of people that said, "Thank you for sending out this email. Send me more information." And so I sent them information from Dr. Terry Jones, you know, about the merger and about the background and the history and everything, and it was a good, it was a good thing for me, you know, from my point of view, but...
Counselor Shea.
I think it's no less problematic than using your city title as an elected official to hold a private email, a private party slash meeting, and then collecting emails while you're doing it, or go to a ward meeting and collect emails and not provide them as public documents that they are. Because what you're doing is you're telling, you're pretending to be, in that scenario, you're holding what appears to the public, an official meeting, because you're saying, "It's the mayor of Wildwood, and I'm giving him my email." And then those reside only in his possession, and who knows what goes out? I think in Ward Six, we kind of got a glimpse of what went out, and Mr. Stevens shared what went out for Ward Seven. So if we want to talk about abuse of city email collections, I think we could have started long before this. I think that we have to all at least acknowledge that it's more deceptive to hold a meeting privately but using your title, getting people there under the impression that it's an official conduction of city business. And we see this all the time, in every ward, and it's abuse of authority, far more abusive than openly acknowledge that these emails came from a city database, you have an unsubscribe button, it dealt with city business under a city title that was legitimate, and he's willing to share it.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yeah, the discussion's been very good, but I think it directs it right at the issue at hand, which is, should this go back to a committee for discussion? I'd like to call the question.
So the question has been called, that takes a two-thirds second, is called by, second by Counselmember Dodwell.
I have a question.
So that's okay, we'll clarify. So the question has been called on the motion to have the temporary policy that has been motioned and seconded. We now have a motion and second to vote immediately. That takes a two-thirds vote. Is there any objection to voting immediately?
What's the policy? Temporary?
Would you please read the motion for Councilmember Shea?
Temporary policy that we will not use resident emails until policy is done by the Admin Public Works.
I think it was resident emails that subscribed to the e-newsletter. Correct. Okay. All right, no objection to voting immediately. Councilmember Stevens?
Okay. Who can't use them? The city? The city can't use their own email list that's subscribed?
So my question is, are you objecting to voting immediately? That's a motion on the floor. Are you objecting to voting immediately?
Sure, I'll object.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on voting immediately.
Is this a yes?
No, this is just to vote immediately, and it takes a two-thirds vote. Actually, we'll do it by, we'll just do it by voice, but let's see if we can move this along. All in favor of voting immediately, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, raise your hand if you're opposed, please. Please, the motion carries, is that correct? Any abstentions? Motion carries to vote immediately. Please call the roll for passage of the motion as you have stated. Madam Court?
I still had a question on, exactly, like, what, the temporary policy is to say that the city of Wildwood cannot use the emails, or just anybody, or, again, how is this enforceable? How do you know who's going to keep track of the list? There's a lot of variables here.
To answer your question, I believe the intent was any elected official, which would be the council or the mayor. Is that correct?
Yes. Especially emails that are assigned to our e-newsletter, because residents do not sign to get emails from elected officials off that list.
Okay.
I believe the motion is limited, actually, to email addresses submitted by residents for the e-newsletter. Okay, so roll call vote, or, yeah, roll call vote, please, on the motion.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
No.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manten?
Yes.
Councilmember Shea?
No.
Councilmember Dillard?
No.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving next to, next item on miscellaneous, censure of Councilmember Greg Stein. Councilmember Stein.
Thank you. So for folks that haven't been following the city council or maybe viewed the agenda and were a little confused by this, I've brought forward a, the wording of a resolution, which would, in effect, it would censure myself. And so I've been asked this by folks, "Why would you do that?" And I think, I think the answer is pretty straightforward. First of all, we had a public participation at the last meeting, one of the Ward Seven residents and my successor to the council next week, request that a motion of censure be brought forward. She felt like she had no recourse through, as a citizen, and so asked who would bring this forward. And I felt like it was fair for me to bring it forward for the council to consider, which, you know, has not been easy, but I think it's important for us to work with transparency and to hold each other accountable. So that's why it's on the agenda. In particular, to the allegation of the resolution, I will say, first of all, I can be kind of a polarizing type of person. As you can see, I don't think there's anybody up here on the dais that I haven't annoyed at one time or the other. And that's not been intentional, but it's kind of the way I operate, is that you're not really going to know which box I fit in, because I don't fit in a box. I don't strive to be in any particular camps. Now, I'll be perceived at times that I do fit in a box or the other, but it's simply not the case. With regards to my interactions with the resident, there is, it's not referred to specifically in the wording, but it really stems from, in the comments in public participation last time, related to a particularly tense meeting over at Pond School in December, where there were, there were expersions to my integrity, Mr. Garitano's integrity, and I took extreme issue, and I mean extreme. And I felt like afterwards that it was extreme, and in fact, I reached out to the resident after that, asked that we get together and talk about it, try to put the differences behind us, because she's going to be taking my place. And when I reached out to her, she said, "Yeah, that'd be great." So we met at Bread Co., and we both apologized. She apologized to me for questioning my integrity, and I apologized to her for the manner that I responded. And after we got that out of the way, we spent another three and a half hours at Bread Co. discussing, talking about the issues, talking about, you know, what kind of guidance would I give her? And there was, it was a really good discussion. And I left that meeting feeling very encouraged, because I've always known that Ms. McCune was going to be a wonderful council member. And so this was two and a half months ago. Last meeting, kind of came out of nowhere, that she did not feel that it was resolved, and she brought it back up, which is disappointing, but I also don't feel that this is something for me to, you know, sweep under the rug. I want there to be a discussion of the council, and I would like there to be a vote. And so with that, I mean, this was put under miscellaneous, but I'm not averse to having a vote now on this, simply because time's short. I'm done after the next meeting. So if anyone would want to make that motion, I would encourage that. To Ms. McCune personally, I just want to say, if I was not clear before, I want to tell you, I'm very sorry for the way that you were treated at that meeting. No resident should be treated that way, and I was wrong. I think sometimes we get a little carried away with emotion during these meetings, and I just, I just, for that, I'm sorry. Ms. McLaughlin, I see you waving as well, and I tried to offer you an apology, and you said not accept it. So I'm not sure what to do, because I would, again, extend my apology for the way you've been treated.
Okay, so...
Okay. So anyway, folks, I'm trying. I don't want to leave the council on a down note. I came to this council because of all the great things that Wildwood is, that there's opportunities to improve things. I'm not here to bicker, I'm not here to, you know, be divisive. So I'll just put it forward to you guys.
So, thank you, Counselmember Stein. So as he mentioned, this is before the council, but it does not have a motion that it would need to bring it forward discussion. Counselor Stevens, you had raised your hand. Do you want to make a motion relative to this?
Motion to postpone this matter indefinitely.
Do you have a motion, Counselor Stevens, to postpone indefinitely? Is there a second? Second by Counselmember Bartoni. Any discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Councilmember Dillard?
I have, I mean, can I ask Councilmember Stein a couple of questions through the chair?
Does it relate to the motion to postpone indefinitely?
Well, it relates to the substance of the motion, which is going to the question of whether we should postpone it.
Okay, so why don't you ask your question, and if it is germane to the motion to postpone, allow it, if not, we'll...
Okay. Well, the first question is, you know, and I hope everybody has read the actual text of the resolution of censure. I assume, Councilmember Stein, that since you presented this, do you believe what is in this resolution of censure?
Okay, I don't think that's germane to postpone.
Well, I will respond, and just that, I have brought this forward to get it on the agenda, but I'm not going to be voting on it.
But do you believe what's in it?
Not entirely.
Not entirely?
The very first whereas, history of threatening and unbecoming behavior while interacting with residents, I don't agree with that.
So Counselmember Dillard, that this is not germane to postpone? The question is, do you want it be, the question that needs to be germane is, do you want this decided tonight or not decided at all? That's the distinction.
Well, I do want it decided tonight, because I think there are...
Okay, then you can speak to that. So you're speaking against the motion to postpone indefinitely?
I am speaking against the motion to postpone indefinitely, because Councilmember Stein brought this forward. And just, I mean, to give everybody here who hasn't read it, you know, just a few excerpts, he's demonstrated a history of threatening and unbecoming behavior while interacting with residents. On several occasions, he's demonstrated behavior beneath the dignity of the office of city council with needlessly confrontational, indemening behavior, lack of decorum, and on several occasions, a complete disregard of the city's procedures, norms, and rules, and on several occasions, used crude, threatening, and inappropriate language in his outbursts from the dais directed at residents of the city of Wildwood. The reason I ask the question is because if he is bringing this, I would, you know, he's saying he doesn't believe at all, but I would think that if he's bringing it, he authored it, he would say that there's some truth to this. I would say, if there's truth to any of these things, give me an argument we shouldn't pass a censure tonight.
Okay. So I believe point of information, he did not author it, is that correct?
I did not author it. I brought it forward for your consideration.
Okay. So anyone else want to speak for or against postponement on an indefinite basis? Seeing none, roll call vote on postponing indefinitely, please.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan Stein?
Abstain.
Councilmember Werther?
Is that a nay or a yea?
Nay.
Okay.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
No.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manten?
Yes.
Councilmember Shea?
No.
Councilmember Dillard?
No.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to postpone indefinitely passes. That takes us to the executive session that I mentioned earlier. Would someone please make the motion? I have to specify, this will be under six-ten-oh-two-one-one. Revised Missouri statute, six-ten-oh-two-one-one. May I, Counselmember Dodwell?
Can I ask a question about it?
Sure.
Okay, so if, we've already...
So if, we've already voted not to take this as a second vote tonight, and we're going to vote on this in two weeks, why do we have to be in a special session tonight on something that we're going to vote on in two weeks? So why can't we just do it in two weeks?
I'll explain it in the closed session. It's very important that we do so.
So was there a second to the motion for executive session?
Seconded by Councilmember McGowan. Um, and this needs to be a roll call vote because it is an executive session as required by law, so roll call vote, uh, whether to go into executive session, please.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
No.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
No.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
No.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shay?
No.
Councilmember Dillard?
No.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
No.
Eight to seven. We have one absent.
So it passes. Correct. Okay. So we will go into executive session. Um, and then for members of the audience, this shouldn't take long and we will return to adjourn this meeting and then.
Eight to seven.
Eight to seven. And to then go back into our work session.
...
I'm. 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 Yeah. 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 It's just. It's. Very commercial. Cause. So, uh. You know, I see. Right. And. 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 I mean, it's. It's. And. 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 Yeah. 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 Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's. I love. I love. Uh. Uh. Exactly. Uh. 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 Exactly. Uh. 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 And I. I don't. 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 Uh. Uh. I wonder. I wonder. Don't. Uh. 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 Well, now, we're gonna. Two years. I need to. Uh. 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 Oh, my God. This weekend, I don't. Uh. 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 I. I. I'm. 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 I was gonna say that. I was gonna say. I was gonna say. I was gonna say. Uh. Uh. When I was talking. I was gonna say. We ever. I get this. Thing. Uh. 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 Yeah. 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 Uh. 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 Yeah. Uh. Uh. Oh. Stop. Panic. Uh. Bro. Uh. 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 I think. I should. I'm. Dude. No commercial signs anywhere. Otherwise, just keep on. Everybody else. But. Don't walk. Walk. Uh. Uh. He had to. He had to make a. Law. Says, well, this is company. Everything. It's not. Ever. You know what? They get the last. How do I? Five. So, they're. So, they're. No one. This is how. 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 I don't say. Uh. 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 Forty-six. I mean. Uh. 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 We. We. You. You sit off. Uh. 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 Next time, we're gonna get off. And make the list. Get longer. So, today, I sent you five. You only got. Your face. I'll be asked to. Twice.[838.32] Throw. The next one. Talk about... Like, being on the ball. I have a client. I'm not... Oh, no, I'm lying. Okay? Over the last year, and I had a guy who actually... And, and, this, this... He made like, I don't know. Really about it. She's on... Four, right? Really, he's on... Right? I... And, well, we know how. He's not about any... Right? And this, you know... So, uh... Okay. You know? Yeah. And that's why I was... I got... We were bad. Yeah. And she's... It looks... Right, you know? Right.
They went to the war.
You go to here. You feel like we don't care? I mean, I actually, yes, we're into here. Yeah. Thank God. Erin, you should have went instead of me.
Now, the criteria is...
I can... There's...
And she got all these things. She had that tape. Oh, that... And she got... She wanted it. Yeah. And she complained how her... Um... I... My hair's on, and a tape.
I mean, yeah, I'm sorry. But maybe I was... Yeah.
I don't agree, you know?
They just... There's something that's mine, though. It's not my... It's really very... Hope you know, I... Well, you... Oh, he just put...
Yeah.
They were not... Like, because they just...
Oh, yeah.
What do we need to say to them? Yeah. I need you to understand that for me, it's great. So, what's the focus? Right?
I don't know why, but I do it. No, no, I don't mind. She can do it. Whatever. I don't care.
Anyway, uh...
All right. Me and I...
I will give this... I'm gonna try my best to do this thing. And you'll have... Why don't you spray you? And then, you know? I can see the thing. I think I'm... So... This is my name. Okay. Just... Okay, and I... I think I'll try to check.
Hey, so... I... No, it's not fair. So, I don't... Huh? Well, they used to do it there.
I have a little bit of a problem.
Oh, yeah, I... For a...
But it's not...
Yeah, yeah, you're not... Exactly. Oh, yeah. Well, of course, the A M. Better than the... That should be... They should want to... It is. What do you still... I am uncomfortable, sir. He does a B by area.
Okay, councilmembers, we are now back in session with the continuation of the, uh, main meeting of the council. Does anyone wish to make a motion before we go to adjournment?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilmember. Yes.
So, to make a motion to reconsider, you have to have voted in the, uh, no, right?
Is that correct, Mr. Young?
That is correct.
So, what you're asking is if anyone voted no, they want to make a motion reconsider, or now's the time to do it? Is that what you're asking, Mr. Mayor?
If they want to do it. That's correct. And it's a simple majority for motion to reconsider. I don't see a motion to reconsider.
Motion to adjourn.
So, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second to the motion to adjourn? Non-debatable, made by Councilmember Shay. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Uh, we will now reconvene the work session of the council, and we have two items. Uh, they are both action items. The first is, uh, from Department of Planning and Parks. Mr. Vinich.
Mr. Mayor, given the hour, uh, this evening, the department would respectfully request the item be postponed for two weeks.
Okay, we have a request from the department for postponement for two weeks. Made by Councilmember Werther, seconded by Councilwoman McCutcheon. Uh, any discussion on the motion to postpone for two weeks? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, councilmembers, we're now back to an executive session. I would entertain a motion to enter into an executive session. Made by Councilmember Taylor, seconded by Councilwoman Dodwell. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yep.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manten?
Yes.
Councilmember Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
And, uh, Mr. Brown, would you like to join us, please? Joe? Okay, councilmembers, all that remains on the agenda is adjournment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the work session of the council, made by Councilwoman Greg Nani, seconded by Councilwoman McGowan. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Stand adjourned. Thank you.